It's over half the students.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Bring this meeting to order. Everyone please rise. Please leave just the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public conscience that one nation, under God, in thy name, for the great justice for all.
This is the set. Roll call.
Mr. Semenaro?
Here.
Mr. Sette, here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. McCollum?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Mr. Babassi?
Here.
And Mr. Beazel?
Here. Under announcements, there'll be an executive session. We'll be discussing negotiations. I'd also, at this time, like to bring forward to the board, I'd like to switch on the agenda, item number seven with item number six. We have a full house here tonight, and I'm sure many people will want to say something. I don't want to hold up the students that will be receiving the award tonight. Does anybody have any agenda to that? Seeing none, that's what we will do. Under procedures for public participation, if everyone has a copy of the agenda on the back of the blue cover, are the policies for participating, we will be holding everyone to the three-minute rule. If you get up and speak, you sign in and state your name and your address for the board. Be loud and clearly so that we can get that up here. And then when you reach the end of your three minutes, I will give you the three fingers, letting you know your time is up, okay? And then please respect that rule. Having said that, we'll move on to number seven on the agenda, which is recognitions for February.
Thank you, Mr. Beazel. We have two sets of awards this evening for the 2011 Daniel Boone Area School District Spelling Bee winners. We have two students to acknowledge, and we also have an Eagle Scout Award. So at this time, as our tradition is, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Trainer for your presentation, and then we would ask those students to please come forward to receive your certificate from the board.
Thank you. The first group we wanted to recognize this evening are Spelling Bee Champions from this building. And I did see the champions. I'm going to ask Jennifer Smith to join me up here. And I'm not sure if they're running around in the audience here. We have a champion.
She shot.
We have both. These two young ladies will be representing Daniel Boone School District by March fourteenth at seven o'clock at the Miller Center for the Arts, where we have the Berks County Spelling Bee. And you may have seen their picture in the Reading Bowl finals a couple weeks ago. They're featuring the students from each school district over the number of weeks prior to March fourteenth. And their winning word was Spartan. And so, girls, would you like to share anything about what you did prior to Spelling Bee to prepare for it? It comes next.
Come on, and we'll have to take you over.
Wish both girls well. Hopefully, you'll see the ballot on the fifteenth of March in the paper. And the second award is for an accomplishment that although not at Daniel Boone, whenever in our student community, we have an individual who earns this recognition, we also feel it's very important to recognize what they do in the community. And so I'm going to ask Matthew Somowski to join me, and his earphone will be given away. On February twelfth of this year, Matthew was recognized as an Eagle Scout. And his project, which we typically, and he already knows, we're going to ask him to give that two-second version of what his project was about, included building a small apartment building around the well water system for the Daniel Boone Middle School and the township baseball fields to protect the equipment. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Matthew and let him share what his project was all about and how he accomplished it.
My project was to build a protection around the water tower because I guess people were vandalizing it. And so we built like a shed. Took like four weekends. And had like a lot of scout help. When you do a project, you add up hours for each person that helps. I had like four hundred hours after four weekends.
Congratulations.
Just a little bit more about Matthew. In the past seven years, as he was a member of the scout troop, he held leadership positions such as scribe, quartermaster, and junior assistant scoutmaster. So he certainly has done well in the scouting program, and we're proud to have him as a Daniel Boone student. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move back to number six. Presentation by public on agenda items.
Very tough one. You need township. What is it that you think through? Down to item eleven A eighty-five-three thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars up. Is that part of the three million dollars owed that we've spent for the stadium or is it addition?
That would be in addition to the money spent on the stadium project.
How much more, how much have we been over-balanced of three million dollars in total of the stadium?
I don't have, I'm looking for it.
It's about, I think it's about five million dollars all in, including the parking project.
Could you break it down between the stadium and the parking project, if you have that as well?
I have it, but I don't have it here tonight.
I think, yeah, it was about a little under three million dollars for the stadium, and the balance was parking. It was like one point six million dollars for parking project itself. And then there were engineering and architectural fees. I think it took it up to about five on the other.
So you're talking basically two million dollars over the three million dollars for the stadium. Because parking project had to come for the stadium.
The stadium was three million dollars. We had the parking, which was not originally accounted for. The stadium came in at what we bought this stadium.
Yes, but saying in all toll, the stadium were well into five million dollars. With the parking. The parking wouldn't have been done if the stadium wasn't done.
Your sweaty hair.
That's correct.
Not my sweaty hairs. I'm putting the fact in matter. We had a three million dollar budget per stadium, and now we've spent five million dollars for that stadium. And now, within another, what, six years' time, we're going to have to put a new field on that stadium and all maintenance. Are we going to really look into this catback that we have created up there? Are we going to be able to really keep the tires and the wheels shiny on that catback? That's what upsets me. Because basically, we put a catback up there, and it's going to give back to these taxpayers now to keep it shining and the wheels on it. Because that thing just doesn't run by itself. All that expense is coming down the line. This is based on even management. Within six years' time, we're going to have to do something with the field and various other things. We're digging ourselves in a hole here. This is why I'm saying, I've said all along, the poor people here in this township, in this township, with fortunate people in this township, as I said before, is going to use that stadium to put their tents there to live, or knock the game before their house.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Daniel Boone High School School Board. My name is David E. Glass. I'm the district judge in Birdsboro. I'm also president of the Birdsboro Rotary Club. I have many members of the club with us here tonight. One of our members is Mary Ann Sutton, the Burke County econotary. I have Mr. Robert Meyer, who's the mayor of Birdsboro, and various business leaders with us tonight. I just want to take a few moments with the Birdsboro Rotary. We feel a strong connection with Daniel Boone School District. We sponsor a Slayist Achievement Bank every year. We give out two five hundred dollar scholarships to worthy students. We send two students to camp, mind of leadership, camp every year. And also, we sponsor the Birdsboro High School Interact Club. And that's what I would like to address right now. We contribute to the club. From what I understand, the club now has sixty-four paid members, dues paying members, and eighty-seven make their attendance. They meet every other Thursday. Mrs. Alicia Turner is the teacher advisor. With the Interact Club, every start of the school year, they have a fundraiser where they sell the, or the pizzas. And this past year, they raised seven hundred dollars, which they use to help finance the Christmas luncheon equipment for the seniors in Birdsboro in December. Also, they are involved with many other community activities. One, it's on the back page. I noticed the Interact Club collects pennies for patients. And that's where they collect loose change. And then those funds go to senior citizens, and they put on activities for the senior citizens in Birdsboro. They also have a backpack program where they, at the elementary school, every Thursday, the food bank comes, the Interact Club students interface with them. They pack food in these backpacks. The backpacks go to the
If I may, you've kind of reached the three minutes. So if there's something you'd like the board to do, or you have a timeout for the board, if you could get?
I'll cut to the chase here.
Thank you.
What Rotary would like to offer, we don't want to see the Interact Club, like an active for activities. It promotes good community service, and lays a good foundation for students to follow through as adults in later life. What we would like to do is, whatever monies that go to support the teacher advisor, the Rotary Club of Birdsboro could go up to as much as two thousand dollars to contribute to that, to have this Interact Club stay on board. So we appreciate whatever you would consider.
Thank you very much. It's a very generous offer.
Hi, my name is Sydney Howell. I live in Douglasville. I am in the air support band and orchestra. There are about a hundred people in band, and I asked you, what will we do next year if you, the school board, will take away band? My goal is to be in junior county band orchestra like my big sister Bethany. If you took away band, I will be the heart of all the other school districts and may never make it anymore. I would like you to please reconsider cutting it so I can try out for junior county and see if I can try maybe.
Thank you. Jason Meyer, my name is Seth Richardson. I have another one question. One of your proposed budget cuts was for transportation, for fifty thousand dollars. I was just wondering if I get some clarity on what that, what it failed.
Right now, that is a reduced increase in contractors' daily rate. So it's an issue that we get. It's part of a reduction based on some things that are written into our current transportation contract involving the Consumer Price Index.
All right. The next question then would be?
Let us make sure that it's clear, okay? We've seen the original budget. We had put in four percent, four point one percent, four percent. And what happened is the CPI went back to two percent. We're not negotiating increases. Put a number in as a hedge, and the economic index unit has had a lower number, so we're able to bring that down through what it actually is.
My next question then would be, was the kindergarten being cut to half-day? It expressed by you, Mr. Beazel, there would not be transportation provided for pickup of one kindergarten, nor for the ward, drop-off, or absentee kindergarten. Is that right?
Well, that determination hasn't been made yet, but my understanding is the budget number that was discussed does not have intraday busing in it.
Four hundred twenty-four thousand dollars is the result of that half-day shift. Does not include intraday busing. So if we reduce intraday busing, my understanding, Mr. Shaheen talked about the process of That's what the curriculum committee brought to the table. And what's on the table right now does not have the half-day.
Glad that you gave the number you spent, but are you all in on the included busing?
No, did not. No, did not.
So to add back, busing was about fifty thousand dollars, I believe. So that number is going to be four twenty-four. If intraday busing was included, would drop down to, you know, four seventy, three seventy-something.
Just so we're clear, the school district will not provide transportation.
That decision hasn't been made yet, but the shift to half-day kindergarten has been made. But in terms of the busing, that has not been made. In terms of our overall budget, right now, there's a placeholder in there for four hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. That discussion, we have four people, someone in the curriculum committee, made a recommendation to include intraday busing. So that would be one of the things that we talk about in this entire budget discussion.
I just wanted to clarify, let me know when I spoke with you the last, you mentioned that to me, and then I do need somebody to contact the Dr. Otto's office and say, in fact, there wouldn't be transportation. That's why I wanted to try to get some clarity on where that is, because I think that's very important information, at least it's got to parents. If there's not going to be, you know, big day transportation to get their kids, you know, for kindergarten. Honestly, I don't see how important parents can be. How can they leave in the middle of the day to pick up their kids on kindergarten?
Just a question, this is why we refer to the only important way to be in, in our Rotary, everything is, everything is out until the question voted on. It's been just a constant movement piece of policy. I agree that what is going to happen in kindergarten is more than that, more very, very strong, you know, transportation. But that's just a moving piece of policy. We don't have anything to do with it. And we know people don't go getting from the government until March eight. We don't have a better idea where we're going to stand on the law.
And what is that voting on the budget? When is that?
Well, we don't vote on the budget until, you know, technically, June. Quite frankly, this money discussion, if you're going to understand, this question started in January, it's going to continue right on through May and June. And all the board is doing right now, we're taking one issue at a time, and we're looking at that issue, and we're trying to find, we're trying to bridge the seven point three million dollar budget gap. And so each one of these issues come up. And if you've been here for the meetings, depending on which issue we're talking about, we have a different group from the community here in support of that particular item. So those decisions, right now, everything's an idea. The kindergarten half-day full day was voted on by the board. That decision is the only one that's been made. In terms of everything else, whether it's band, or athletics, extracurriculars, all those things, those are ideas that have been proffered by the administration to help close this budget deficit. In aggregate, those ideas amount to about three point three million dollars. We still have a long way to go, about four million dollars to go.
One final question then. You said, why wasn't then the kindergarten promoted launch so early in the process?
Well, because our administration had to have time to lay out that plan, to move from half-day to from full day to half-day. And we had to get that done before kindergarten registration.
Hello, my name is Brittany Gessler. I live at five thousand six Peppering. I apologize if this is out of the order of the agenda. I've received two speakers, led me to believe that this would be the appropriate time. Dear Daniel Boone School District, as a parent of two children from the district, I'm asking you to please reconsider your proposal to reduce the positions of the on-court teachers in this district. By reducing these positions, I can only conclude that our students' access to these programs will be even more limited than they are currently. Our students' future cannot afford the sacrifice. Today's school districts have the distinct challenge of preparing students to meet the needs of the 21st century. This era of public education and schooling is unlike any that we've ever known. Today's students have very different needs than those in the past. Today's students need to be prepared to compete in a global society in occupations that do not even exist yet. In addition to the core academic subjects, students need to be proficient in critical thinking skills, problem solving, communication, creativity, and collaboration. These unique skills are demonstrated in the on-court classes. These multi-classmate skills are being recognized as the skills that separate students who are more prepared for complex life and work environments in the 21st century and those who are not. Restricting our students' opportunities to use essential courses is not an acceptable way to meet your budget deficit. In reconsidering your decision to reduce these positions, I urge you to please consider the needs of all of your students. The on-court classes provide a strong foundation to many possible career paths. The assignments and class activities help to lay the foundation of future post-secondary school and career decisions. In these subjects, the learning, excuse me, in these subjects, the learning is contextual. Students easily understand why they are learning what they are learning. The curriculum in on-court classes led to a hands-on learning approach. When students learn by doing, there is a higher retention of subject matter. Why should these opportunities be taken from our children? The majority of the on-court classes at Daniel Boone are supported by the Pennsylvania State Standards. In reducing the teaching positions, the availability for all students to have access to these classes will be significantly effective. If students, if schools do not offer curriculums that cover all state standards, they may be fined during an audit. When this happens, schools have limited time to reinstate cut programs or to develop a plan to address the standards that have been left out. This district does not need another crisis situation. In closing, board members, I ask again that you reconsider the reduction of these programs. This decision impacts all of the Daniel Boone secondary students, not just a small population. I urge you to be creative in your quest to balance the budget and come up with a solution that will not negatively impact the education process of our students. Thank you.
Dear school board, I'm with Joe Shager, and I'm on the fourth place on the fourth through the steering and managing team. My mom has been talking about the school board meeting, and that might not be for the great day next year. I fully declare that I rarely look forward. I was looking forward to this great day. I like to read new notes, and a lot of my friends play this. I also was performing at the concert. It would be disappointing if I couldn't play this for my man next year. All my friends who play different instruments also would be sent here. Some of the people that we don't play with even too late today may swim next year, but they can't if there's no band next year.
Hey, can we get your name?
Rachel.
Rachel, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Sean Snakey. I live at seven thirty-five from the pride of Douglasville. Thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak to this evening. My interest in speaking includes regarding item fourteen F, the elimination, the special eliminating of the fourth district ban, as well as overall generally, the eliminations and reductions that are being proposed and are being made public for the music education program here in the school district. There are numerous studies that show a significant correlation of music education to improve student academic success, higher standardized testing scores, and improvement in learning. Even here at Berks County School District, recently went through a grant process where they incorporated a spring program. And through that process, even though they ran out of grant money and expired, and the court was eliminated, it was significantly proven that music education in those children did significantly show a higher success rate academically, higher standardized score. However, I'm not going to exert myself of those matters too much more, simply because I need to shift my focus away from what actually causes educational excellence and turn towards a more immediate financial impact, and which we find ourselves addressing today. So let's discuss facts and quantitative data regarding the amount of money in music education across Daniel Boone School District and the number of students impacted. You all just received a packet of information about music education in Daniel Boone School District fact sheet. This pack includes current data on cost of student, as well as issues that have not been addressed regarding the long-term of fiscal and educational impact these cuts will have. As you review these specific facts and issues, I would simply ask that you publicly confirm the accuracy of the quantitative data and provide the answers to the long-term impact issues this evening. If you cannot do either of these, then I would ask why you're voting on the data is perfect, if you can't end up off the facts, or long-term analysis completed. I would also ask why our superintendent's not been helping campus or not providing that information if it cannot be approved, and a proper long-term analysis since these persons' efforts and endeavoring to bring that information to the school board. Since it seems the money is the only link to all discussions, let's discuss the fact that by cutting the music education program, particularly the whole under the band and choir programs, we're simply kicking the can down the road, so to speak, regarding fiscal impact. The elimination of these programs will provide a short-term financial solution, but in the long term, the school district will more than double the amount of money in staff needs. Music educators, particularly those who are in performance units such as band and choir, teach class sizes two to three times. teach class sizes two to three times the size of your average classroom teacher. These same classroom teachers typically have contractual rights to watches, planning periods, and class sizes. By eliminating all the abandoned chorus programs, the triple up effect is what will be produced, which will eventually get to middle school and high school levels. And it will obviously impact student enrollment and/or the existence of those programs. This effect will decrease less enrollment and the end effect is that one full-time employer, FTE, was capable of handling a student load would need to be replaced by two to three, four, five employees. Basically, what I'm getting at is that I'm getting to the point that in the long term, by eliminating these programs, it will ultimately cost us much more money in staff needs as that general student load that one FTE has will be shifted into the general curriculum. Obviously, you have the rest of my written statement regarding conclusions that I am forced to make as a community member. And I ask you to consider those and that financial impact down in the long term because I do not think that's going to adjust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aaron Zerwul. I live at 2045 Blue Land in Douglasville. I'm also here to talk about the fourth and fifth grade band programs and all the other extracurricular music programs that are considered being cut. First off, I would like to thank the board and the school district that they allowed me and three other students from the high school to attend the Region Five chorus session this past weekend at Parkland. It was an honor. I would like to say how much music has done for me. I'm an active member in the chorus and the band. Many, I'm in many different honors groups such as Senior County Band Chorus, District Chorus, Region Chorus. And these things have changed my life because of it. Also, I would like to say that our director at Region Chorus told us that school boards are doing a good job of helping the students mentally and physically. But they're forgetting the most important thing, the spiritual aspect of it. And that's what music and arts can do. One of the songs we sang, a lyric from it, "But music and singing shall be my refuge, and music and singing shall be my light." Those words hit me deep and they mean so much to me. Music means so much to me and I know that it means so much to other students in this school. So please consider that. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sheri Markoff. I live at Grand Center Team along the area of Douglasville. As president of the Daniel Boone Music Crews Group, I address the board this evening on behalf of the Music Crews Group Executive Board and the General Membership. In consideration of the impact that would be felt from the proposed cuts to district-wide music programs, we would like to express our opinions and concerns to the members of the board. We would first like to acknowledge that we clearly understand that economic conditions and other factors outside of our control are placing the district in an extremely difficult position. Clearly, we understand that the 2011-2012 budget must be balanced. And as a community of music parents, we fully accept responsibility to make our share of sacrifices during this process. It comes as no surprise that the overall response from music parents is the willingness to accept pay-to-play scenarios for the extras in our music programs, especially if this is what is needed to keep our programs alive. Backed by the Music Crews Group's commitment to stand by our mission statement and to continue to support the music programs both morally and financially, we feel that many of these programs may be able to survive despite the increased load that will come to bear on all. Our greatest concern, however, is the current proposal to curtail the program programs at the elementary levels. Fourth and fifth grade bands are the building blocks for all other instrumental programs from grade six, six through twelve. Without this basic foundation, many successful Daniel Boone music programs will most likely deteriorate and hundreds of our students may lose valuable educational, cultural, and developmental experiences. But we can easily pay in the cuts of the extracurricular programs through financial means, we find ourselves fundamentally opposed paying to play or fundraising for music curriculum. Paying these to cover salaries simply does not seem like a practical or appropriate solution. We find ourselves in a crossroad and are looking to the school board to help us protect these programs for the sake of the hundreds of Daniel Boone students who may be impacted in the years to come. While we urge the members of the board to carefully consider the far-reaching and long-term impacts that the curtailment of the elementary band may have on our very successful music programs, we challenge you and we offer to work with you to find viable solutions to the proposed budget proposals and cuts.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Del Miracle. Welcome obviously to the program Douglasville here. Of course, I may say I'm very proud and very proud of the kids who get up here and speak. It's hard enough to do as a grown-up, but they're doing a great job. My main question tonight, I'll look for some clarification, please. There are, there's information out there about what the half-day kindergarten curriculum will hold. I've heard that it will be consecutive half-hour modules of learning over a three-hour time span. I've heard there will be recess twice a week. I've heard there will be no recess. I've heard there will be snack at the desks. I heard there will be no snack. So I'm looking for some clarification on what the program actually will be, what the curriculum will be, and what type of curriculum we have. Will we be doing reading, writing? Will we have enough time for social play, dramatic play? Definitely looking for some more information on that. If not from the board, perhaps from Mrs. Trainor, that would be appreciated.
And Mrs. Trainor, we've kind of already had some of that conversation, so I'm sure she can give you some quick answers.
Thank you.
At this particular time, there are no decisions. I have a district-wide staff committee of kindergarten and first grade teachers. I'll call them the elders of kindergarten and first grade who have experienced multiple grades in teaching themselves. And we are using as the basis of our program development the Common Core standards, which will become the norm in the state of Pennsylvania in the next two years, which dictates for us the curricular topics that should be covered in every grade from kindergarten through 12th grade. Right now, we have two models to look back on our former half-day program and our current full-day program. It is our intention to have coverage for all of the core content areas which are expected to the Department of Education, which is a strong emphasis on language arts, reading, writing, math, integration of social studies and science into centers. But we do not meet until March the 8th. And so where all of the information in the community is, certainly didn't come from a group who has not even sat down to develop that yet nor myself. So at this particular time, short of saying we're looking for that kind of a model, we do not have that program in place yet. So as we start to meet and develop that program, I can certainly keep the board aware of that. And a number of people, including the teachers, have tried to come up with some creative ways to maximize core instruction with the professional staff. And they're also going to have to balance if the board makes a decision that instructional aids will be eliminated from the budget, how we're going to accommodate differentiated instruction. So there are numerous major considerations to look at. And so until those factors are all played in and the staff has a chance to meet several times just to at least confirm that there are no decisions made and there are no things set in stone at this part.
Okay, thanks, Anne Marie.
My name is Russell Pye. I live at 202 Blackwood Grove. I am in fourth grade at A and M. I want you to know that I am also in fourth grade band. Please do not get rid of fourth and fifth grade band. I look forward to playing again next year. My friends would also be disappointed if you come back. Please keep the extra stuff like TSA reading and what they say. Please keep the extra stuff like TSA reading and what they say. I really want to be in the middle school just like my sister.
Thank you, Russell.
Hi, my name is Jack Pye. I am Russell's father. He wanted to do that, I don't know if he'll do it. It was all his choice. I'm here for a couple of reasons. First of all, I'm going to start off by saying, well, we live, like you said, really in Blacksmith Road, no, I mean, or in Douglasville. Two things I want to say. First of all, my daughter Rachel took second place in the TSA competition and she's going to the States in April. I tell you that because I'm her father and I get to brag about it. So that's something to tell me honestly. What I have to say next is nothing to do with that. Not only you can't do that. I don't relish the position you guys are in, in all honesty, I really don't. And until such time as the brothers in Pennsylvania rise up and escort the fight in the school districts and install a county-wide school district system, we're going to have this problem. But I'd like to just remind everybody what the goals of Daniel Boone Area School District is. According to the section of the programs called Educational Goals, the board recognizes that education is a vital function of the state and the community. The goals are communication skills, mathematics, self-esteem, analytical thinking, understanding others, citizenship, arts and humanities, science and technology, work, family living, health, and environment. Under Programs Philosophy of Education, it says this, "The K12 educational program will be responsive to the needs of the students and staff and reflect the values of the community." So as the school board as they go through this budget and they make these cuts, to remember that is the goals and the philosophy of the Daniel Boone Area School District. And that it's not about bottom line, it's about the children who are going to school and who are getting educated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Leilani Pufnok. And I live on the Calca Road in Bartsborough. And I have a couple of questions. In lieu of proposed budgetary cuts to the middle school sports programs and to your music program for the fourth and fifth grade, I'm curious to know how the school board and the school district intends to attract families to move into this school district. We will have subsstandard sports and music programs and a bare-bones academic curriculum. To me, this is not a very appealing school district looking forward. I want to know what your vision is for the future for this school district? Because it doesn't look very promising. Anyone?
Do you have any other questions?
I do.
Why don't you go through your questions then?
Okay, my next question is, and I don't expect you to have an answer or maybe the next school board meeting, you could provide me with an answer for this. I'm just curious how much we spend annually on foresight testing and IELTS testing and other testing that we do to prepare our students for the PSSA testing. And are these tests state and dated? Does anybody know that, that they're state and dated?
I want to make sure we give you your three minutes. So if you have other questions, we'll get to all the questions.
No, that's it.
Yeah, Mrs. Trainor, you want to talk about the testing foresight, IELTS, PSSAs?
The cost for the foresight test right now is about $17,000 and it's covered through grant money. It does not come out of the general fund.
Okay.
It's out of grants that I write each year. School districts in Pennsylvania, once they fall short of meeting No Child Left Behind standards, are required to do a testing program through what they call a Getting Results Action Plan. At this particular time, Daniel Boone is fortunate not to be in that particular situation where they are not meeting AYP. But school districts across the state are encouraged, and I think if you would talk to the staff, in order to be able to do a good job of differentiated instruction in their classroom with the students who they are dealing with each day, there needs to be a tool to be able to determine what are the strengths and weaknesses of the students in that room. And so we used to use the IELTS scores a number of years ago. But the foresight scores, which are promoted by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, are aligned to what's Pennsylvania's standards will be the Common Core standards. And it's done in order to monitor progress of the students. And so that particular test is done at the beginning of the year to give the current teacher a profile of the students in their class mid-year and then at the end of the year. So not only can we monitor student progress, but also to evaluate the curriculum and whether or not some of the strategies we're using. They spread it out over a number of days. But it would be difficult at best to truly, I think, meet the needs and put the programs in place that our teachers use if they didn't have what they call a progress monitoring tool. So that is...
So there is no progress monitoring tool?
Foresight is a progress monitoring tool.
Foresight, yes.
Yes, and that's why we chose that over what we used to do when we did IELTS tests once a year because that was a nice snapshot in the fall, but it never allowed us to see student growth and/or to alter what we were doing throughout the year.
During this testing time though, there are other subjects that are not being taught, such as science perhaps is not being taught while some of these tests are going on. Is that correct?
It would depend on the individual team of teachers. But the test only, the actual foresight test as opposed to your PSSA test between the control...
I'm not talking about the PSSAs.
The foresight test only...
I think, if I could just hear, maybe this is going to be a dialogue?
No, no, that was my last thought.
It's not. They're only grading about an hour and a half a day. It doesn't take the whole thing for weeks when they're doing these testing. And sometimes it's not even an hour. So it depends on the grading, the testing taking, and how they decide they're going to administer that test. But once it's in September, once it's beginning of February, then not till the middle of May. So the PSSA is the ones that consume the curriculum.
And you can certainly call the school district and talk to Anne Marie Trainor, you know, anytime during the week, so she can answer those types of questions for you. In terms of your overall question, what is the vision for the school district? I mean, I sat on the strategic planning committee. I sit on it again this year, which is made up of parents and teachers and administrators and board members. And we put together a mission statement for the school district. And that's the mission statement the school district is trying to follow.
Which is?
Well, I can't refuse to see it for being away now, I don't know.
If you don't have a vision of the...
I don't have it memorized, no, I don't.
We don't have it in hand?
I don't have it with me, no. I'm happy to get it to you if you want to send me...
So that, that mission statement is our vision to draw families to the school district? Is the answer to my question?
Look, I think the answer to your question is yes, we have a strategic plan that is designed to provide the best education that we possibly can for our kids. I think what everyone here in the audience needs to recognize is the school board is not the enemy here. We all support all the programs that everyone here is talking about tonight and then some. If we didn't, they wouldn't be here in the first place. And really, Christian to the choir, when we're talking about band or athletics or academics, we all believe in all those things. The issue that we're facing is really one of the financial crisis. We don't have the money to pay for everything that we currently have. And so certain cuts have to be made in order to balance the budget. What this process is that we're doing right now is looking at all the, the entire rainbow of possibilities that we can consider as a board to put together a plan to balance that budget. And some of those decisions are not going to be popular. And they're not even popular among the board members up here. But, you know, at the end of the day, we got to balance the budget. So that's the process that we're going through. That's the best answer I can give you.
That's my thought, thank you.
Hi, Diane Fox. I'm from Boyer Town Pike in Douglasville. I've heard what you've said, but I still feel I need to read the statement that I prepared. And I thank you for your time. Tonight I wanted to speak to you as a parent. And it's your... Tonight I wanted to speak to you as a parent, and it's regarding the possibility of reducing the on-court teachers at the middle school to part-time status. The on-court teachers, they basically give our children many opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have. And sometimes they're often, well, actually often they're overlooked. They teach our children how to play instruments, cook, plan menus, express themselves with art, work with computer technology and other technologies. My main concern tonight is actually TSA. And I know you've heard that from other people, and for those of you who do not know what that is, it's the Technology Student Association. It is a student organization and it focuses on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. If you've listened to any of the media recently, you've heard about STEM, and this is what the focus is. It provides students with opportunities to showcase their abilities in these avenues. In addition to that, it provides them with the leadership skills, teamwork exercises, and critical logical thinking exercises. Students then learn to think beyond. They look beyond the obvious, and they gain confidence in those choices. It also provides them with opportunities to evaluate various careers in these fields. And by doing so, they have a better idea of what direction they may choose to go to in college. TSA is a need-to-have program to provide competitive advantages to our children. Not just because they're children, because they are our future. They are the future chemists, engineers, physicists, leaders, and the list goes on. In econ, we are struggling, but we also need to understand that it is based on technology. We cannot afford to deny our students this opportunity to evaluate top technologies. When TSA started in 2006, there were 20 students, and now there's 58 students at the middle school. Of those 58 competing students, 30 of them have earned the opportunity to compete at the state level. So, some people might say, who puts the bill for this? Well, in case you aren't aware, it's the parents of those children. Yes, each of those 30 children will pay a minimum of $350 to attend the conference. That is in addition to what we have paid for all of their professional attire, their dues, and other activities that we competed in. In addition to that, we have had fundraisers throughout the year to cover these expenses of the club. If you cut the on-court teachers to part-time status, this is no longer available to our students. They will not have a teacher to advise them and review their work for competitions. And they will no longer have the ability to obtain this invaluable experience. The only way that the students can compete in this arena is if the school registers them with an advisor.
Diane, I hate to interrupt you, but you've reached the three minutes. I suggest if you take that written statement email to the board?
I have a copy, you may have.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I didn't mean to cut you short, but... Thank you. Craig Brown, Woodland, Roseburg, Rock. On record, 14th at the committee, the whole meeting, as you all know, board proposal was made by local parents about how we could possibly save full-day kindergarten, where to raise $125,000 by the end, by March 28th. This fund would be mostly generated by parents. I just wanted to give you, the board, a quick update on what we've been up to over the past couple of weeks. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. Two weeks ago, we call ourselves the Daniel Boone Public School Initiative. We have a legal PIM number, bank account set up. We started a pretty massive awareness campaign the past couple of weeks. We're meeting weekly at the Center 21 office in Douglasville. So if anybody has any questions, the parents or owners, they can come there and get their questions answered. We will be at kindergarten registration, where we'll be handing out information and surveys to the parents that have questions about the program. Saturday, we officially open for donations. We have a website, let me plug it, it's www.bbfooldayk.com. We also have several fundraisers coming up the next couple of weeks, as they're on the website as well. I'd like to thank the parents, the local business, our local professionals donating their time. And I'd like to thank the board, and we're looking very forward to the next 10 days of kindergarten registration. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it.
If I may address the board one more time, if that's okay. I have a question...
We actually, we only allow you to come up once, so there's a lot of people here today. You can address the board at the end. Thank you.
Tom Shannon, 729 Second Street, Roseburg. I have a question on the agenda regarding 10th B legislative report. I kind of don't know what that report would be, Mr. Sheen, but I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion that this board pass a resolution tonight asking Governor Corbett and the legislature to increase basic funding for 2011, 2012, over the current year, by 5%. It doesn't hurt to ask. It's because he says something happened. What's the problem? 501 school districts passing that? Asking you to do that. Number two, pass a resolution tonight opposing school vouchers. That will, if it passes, and in a few years it would apply to a district like Boone, it takes money away from you, but you still have to pay for the buildings you've built and everything else you've built, even though you would have fewer students. I have a question. What's the timetable for referendum or no referendum? Also, tonight I heard the gap in the proposed budget. I've always heard 6.9. I wasn't here at the last meeting, now I'm hearing 7 something, 7.3. So I wanna know what the time schedule was for the referendum or no referendum, and explain the 7.3. Number four, I only have two more. I'm asking the school board tonight to reconsider your recent vote to move kindergarten to half-day. And my last one is not a question, it's just opinion. I don't feel Mr. Ross and Mr. McCullough were treated fairly in regards to membership on the finance committee. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, I'll do my best to answer your questions. In terms of the gap, the state, I want me to put it this way, the state had some issues with its financing as well for basic education, and they rolled back that financing, I think it was $387 million, in addition to $50 million that the governor, Rendell, had rolled back previously. And there was a spending freeze that was put in place by Corbett when he came into office. They found some money with some federal dollars, or was it roads or something like that, state?
Ed jobs.
Ed jobs, if they're gonna use to plug the hole, $337 million, which still left a $50 million gap in overall basic education funding. On top of that, Ms. Penza had learned that we should be looking at '07, '08, '06, '07 funding levels, as opposed to what we currently assume, which dropped our budget revenue dollars by those $600,000. And we actually realized a savings on our health insurance of $200 and change. And so, the net-net was, we moved from 6.9 to 7.3. Did that sum it up?
That's correct.
Okay, and then in terms of your other question?
Have you subtracted the $425,000 from kindergarten?
We have not taken...
But you voted, you voted to do that, so should you subtract it?
It's a live document, so...
Okay, but you haven't subtracted.
We've got $3.3 million worth of cuts that have been proposed to the board. Included in that $3.3 million is the kindergarten full-day, half-day discussion.
Okay.
Okay. In terms of the referendum, I believe it's March 18th is the deadline for voter referendum.
That's the deadline for the referendum question to be submitted to the county board of elections. Prior to that?
Prior to March?
Prior to March 18th, the board would have to take action to direct the administration to submit that question to the board of elections.
Hi, my name is Alinda Forens. I'm at Wyden 06, Victoria Drive, and that's in Douglasville. I am a member of the Daniel Boone Public School Initiative, and I just wanted to talk about the curriculum for kindergarten. I was at the curriculum meeting, and I think that it was proposed that there was gonna be 30-minute modules that were gonna be back-to-back-to-back for three hours. I then addressed the board at one of the board meetings, and I actually talked to Mrs. Trainor about whether there would be availability for play and for time for social skill building. And she had mentioned that there would be gym classes, which would be maybe once or twice a week, and that is about it. And I just wanted to tell you, that's where we're getting our information, is from you guys. I thank you very much for working with us to help raise this money. And I wanna address the people that are here tonight. This group, they don't have money. They don't have money for the kindergarten class for full day. And we're trying to get that money for our children. We're trying to be advocates for our children. Kindergarten is not like it was 10 years ago. You know, 10 years ago, children were going to kindergarten and they were learning their ABCs. They were learning tests, spell their name, they were learning to recite their address. Nowadays, children, when they go to kindergarten, they have to know their ABCs, how to write them in uppercase and lowercase, how to sound them out. They need to know how to spell their names. They need to know a lot more than what they did 10 years ago. The curriculum has changed in that time. And I think it's very important to have full-day kindergarten, and just to spread that information throughout the day, allow for creativity, allow for play, social skill building. So I beg the community to help us out, be advocates for our children. I beg the businesses in the community to help us out, help our children get a good education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for your comments. Moving on to the next agenda item. Number eight, which came approved. It's recommended the board directors approve the minutes of the January 10, 2011 voting meeting, the January 14, 2011 board voting meeting. Go ahead and motion.
Go move.
Second. Okay, we'll call those.
Mr. Semenar?
Yes.
Mr. Sade, yes, Mr. Porcel?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Chahin?
Yes.
Mr. Vabask?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to number B. It's recommended the board directors accept the following financial reports. Do you have such a motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll call those.
Mrs. Sade, yes, Mr. Porcel?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Chahin?
Yes.
Mr. Vabask?
Yes.
Mr. Semenar?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Number C is recommended the board directors proclaim the bills from August 10, 2011, as listed in the financial package. Do you have a motion for C? Thank you.
Second.
Mrs. Porcel?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Chahin?
Yes.
Mr. Vabask?
Yes.
Mr. Semenar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sade, yes, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, presentations by board members. Any secretaries correspondents?
None.
Okay, first counting every minute.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Basil. The BCIE Board met, February 17. I believe everyone was emailed what happened at the BCIE minutes. I'll just highlight a few of the items. First of all, the representative, representative, excuse me, from Purbar and Company was present to give us an update on our annual audit, which we did, of course, pass, and provide us with a copy of that. Other routine board approvals were, we acknowledged receipt of bids for fuel, gasoline, diesel, and heating oil. We authorized an unpaid internship for a Reading area community college student to work in the Head Start program. We approved a revision to the 2011, 2012 BCIE calendar. We also approved the rental agreement for this district for the property, for the life skills and the special education program. And that is for rent being $1,000 a month, including utilities. We granted permission to solicit bids for the driver education program vehicles. We approved a change order to belt and construction for additional trim and holding handicap accessible shower seats for the transportation center. And we authorized an agreement with Eastern Air Balance Corporation for air balancing and hydraulic system balancing for the HVAU building system that will be, will be beginning work on for the Rivers Chase.
Great, thank you very much. Number D, CTC.
The FERC met on Wednesday at 24th and 25th. I actually had a company presentation, some company control controls. They do alternate energy restrictions and also the vulnerability of the building. They have been working with the chances to become a way to save money on energy and also discuss the possibility of putting a solar farm. The answer is to create an electric source, for an energy source. We, that was just really based on, and we're, the facilities committee will be discussing that in Florida. They also approved the purchase of two school vans, advertised deal bid for a bus, and upgraded some of the GPS and surveillance units for some of the buses, which we did discuss. Whether we could put some of the stuff off due to the budget prices that everyone's, that they felt the safety of the students was a concern factor, so they upgraded through the vehicles. They are discussing budget. We did have people occasionally on that. They have finalized the recommendations, and we're considering that. If this is one of the coming months, then we'll be voting on that at margin.
Great, thank you. Legislative report?
Most of what we've been seeing emails coming around concerns the upcoming market for the new government. Part of the inventory staff that spoke of was the resetting of our basic education money from what we thought was the '07, '08 back to the '06, '07 level. There's rumors now, rumors and rumors, which whenever there's rumors, there's some foundation in fact that potentially maybe going back to '05, '06 level, which would give us another, maybe the deficit gap to $600,000, additional gap that that board got when they released going '06, '07. The governor has helped balance the budget, and right now it seems like his favorite working point is going to be public education, without a doubt, one way or another. He's gonna balance the budget, and '05, '06 is currently what it looks like in the beginning. And there's still eight days where it could go anywhere from there on down.
That's not the kind of news we wanna hear.
I like it.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Fadasi?
Yes.
Mr. Semenara?
Yes.
Mrs. Sessak?
Yes.
Mr. Parkl?
...to do it and then secondarily, if we do get permission, if the board actually goes ahead and gives us permission then to do that. Just to make it very clear to the public, what we're really trying to do with these is to give the board another tool that it may need. You've heard a lot of scenarios where we talked about, we don't know how much money we're getting from the state, we're thinking that Governor Corbett is going to give us that information next Tuesday. He may or may not give us a direct figure on Tuesday. That's been the general practice, but when new governors and new administrations come through, sometimes things change. So what we're trying to do is give the board and us as administration as many tools as possible to try to close the tremendous gap that we've been talking about. I've had numerous conversations, I've received, if I may for just a second, there are numerous emails from people around the community. I've had numbers of you come up and speak to me. Mrs. Mondock from the Music Boosters was gracious enough to give me her time today and we had a long conversation about the nature of these cuts, all of which I think are very, very distasteful to us from terms of program. But there is a financial reality that we all have to deal with. Most of the time, people don't want to have that conversation, but it is a reality that we are confronted with. So I can only tell you, and I think I share the sentiments of the word "we offer these" with heavy heart, and I don't need to be melodramatic, but these are not things that we feel that we want to do under normal circumstances. But if you look around, we are not under normal circumstances. So I would just ask you to bear with us and to understand that we do this with the opportunity to try to help everybody in this scenario. We haven't even begun to talk about the potential for tax increase that's coming later down the road. We didn't even have a discussion of it. We really don't want to, but we know it's a reality. So I bear with, you know, I would just reach out to everyone as we say that, and I hope I'm answering the question here in terms of world language program. That's a general synopsis of the impact that it would have. I keep saying it every chance, I got the former foreign language teacher. This one cuts right into me. I mean, it's, and these other programs are just as important, but we're in a real tight spot.
But our students would still have the ability to take four years.
Yes, I mean, I'm sorry, yes. What's important as well, as part of the resolution, maybe if I can paraphrase, Mr. Subers helping with these, one of the things that the school code does not require, and I know one of the parents stood up and talked about bare bones and things that we don't have to do. It is true, if you look at the school code, we do not have to offer any more than two years of two languages. That's it. We are not recommending going to that level, but we are based on the financial circumstances, please hear that first. Based on the financial circumstances, we want to offer the board another tool to help balance the budget, if that's something that we ultimately have to do. Maybe some of these conversations will go away if magically Governor Corbett gives us $2 million that we weren't expecting. I'm not holding my breath waiting for that money. We have to take action as a board and as a district to make sure that we are as fiscally responsible as well as we are program responsible. That is what we're trying to do. So at the high school level, we will still offer a full four-year complement of French, Spanish, and German. That will still be in the curriculum. If eventually we get to first approval from PDE, and then I can assure you, as you see, this board definitely wants to deliberate that once they get the answer. If the answer is no from PDE, the deliberation's over. That program has to stay and we will have to find budget cuts from some other aspect in order to close, and I'm just going to use the word tremendous, that tremendous gap that we have. The number's so big right now, it's almost incomprehensible, so we have to close that gap. So I can assure you that we will still have a full foreign language program, nine through 12, in the Daniel Boone School District, if all of those negative things have to happen, that PDE would first approve it, then secondly, that this school board would accept it as a reduction. I hope that answers it.
I have a question. You mentioned that we would have to come up with alternative study programs, whatever I mentioned in the wording, but would we not have one that had no bias? Or are you looking?
No, we would be able to absorb that and we'll break it with teachers that would be remaining into their schedule. That's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, it would not cause a new cost.
You're looking for a longer?
Correct.
Teachers and at that point there?
Yes, we have, we've already had conversations with Mr. Hankel regarding that, and he believes he can absorb the students.
I would like to see a plan that.
Okay, we can get that. Sure.
And then you have to serve it for prior.
We may even be able to have that for you by now.
I'd like to see if we can get a four, three, two-step, three-step, and just staff.
I'll be happy to get that for you.
When I asked that question at the last meeting, I was told by Mr. Hankel that he was going to extend the time periods of other classes rather than offer additional class because there was no additional teachers available, so this is different from what Mr. Hankel had said at the last meeting. So did we change the plan?
What are the implications that you have with Mr. Hankel regarding that?
Mr. Hankel did, you are correct, that he was talking about extending the classes. That would create some issues for him as far as running a schedule within a schedule because he'd be running a six, seven bell schedule and then an eighth grade schedule that would be different times. This was a second option that we took a look at, where in fact, he believes that scheduling, we would not need additional staff, but we have not made any decisions yet because we wanted to look at what would be more beneficial for the students and we were also thinking, just even in terms of what will or will not be part of a middle school library program and what we could do to compensate. So there's a couple of factors at this particular time. So we have not made a final decision on what our recommendation would be to the curriculum committee.
Well, that's not, you've got a lot of work to do, Dr. Rato, but let's ask, we're just because now we've got two different scenarios, one of which eliminates anything and now we would be not to change the belt, but adding a different course. So what's on your mind?
Actually, the first week in May, April, rather, Mrs. Mustauer and I are attending the annual Pennsylvania Partner Education Title I and Academic Conference that they have, and we're hoping at that particular time to at least find some options with, in that conference, that would be something that Mr. Hankel could then recommend and bring to you during your April committee, or your curriculum committee. So we would have something for you by April.
We'll pick one.
Then let's be honest, PDE takes its week time and gets back to us.
Well, I don't think we can answer that.
I have one other question for Dr. Otto. If we move forward with this, will this improve or detract from the quality of education that we're offering for these students?
In terms of foreign language, it will certainly be less experience for them. I think what we would be able to offer then, if we take our time and put together this program, it'll be a good replacement, but obviously, it's not foreign language instruction and it's not foreign language information. So in terms of affecting world language program, programming negatively, I would have to say yes, it would.
We're only asking for permission, we're not doing this yet.
But I mean, I want to be honest with you, I mean, in that sense, it really is not, I mean, you're losing instruction in foreign languages.
Mrs. Spessett, yes, Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Fodaski?
Yes.
Mr. Salmonara?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Okay, moving on to 14F, recommended the board, the directors approve the resolution regarding the challenge and alteration of the library program as presented by the solicitor. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to move deep into around that one, too. We've already cut it down significantly and already had a number of issues with allowing getting students into research, which is needed for classroom work, so.
Again, the way we would be approaching this is it would have severely impacted the middle school and the high school library to the point that the libraries would be only staff, with the realignment of staff that would occur as a result of this for half of the time of each day. The library would remain open, but a lot of the work for research with students would have to fall to teachers.
President, I have a question. How often, we were hearing?
Mrs. Stray, do you want to help with these?
We were hearing at the actual levels, especially that it was not open during certain periods of the day.
We have staff in the middle school and the high school. There's, I'll say it's 50% of the time with an elementary librarian, and then what Mrs. Gerhardt did at the high school, worked with Mr. McQuillan to allow the library to remain open until 3 o'clock, and so what Mr. McQuillan did was find a staff member that, let's say there may have been two in the study hall, and so one of those two study hall teachers would cover a small portion to allow Mrs. Gerhardt to start a half an hour later and then be able to extend that time at the end of the day, which is what we heard earlier, that some of our students wanted some time between 2:30 and 3:00 to be able to get into the library. So the last time I talked to Mr. McQuillan, which was about mid-year, the library was open until 3:00, instead of just till 2:30, to accommodate for students.
But the question is, what will the change be after this?
The change will be if the resolution, as Dr. Otto has it for you, that the elementary librarians will continue to service the middle school and the high school, but they, as their entire schedule is over the course of, I'll say, a week, they are only in those buildings half of each day. And so the other half of the day, which currently has your middle school librarian present or your high school librarian present, would not have a librarian there, it would just be accessible by teachers who wanted to run their classes in.
Okay, so you're, so the library is closed 50% of the half of it, except that the teaching brought in classes.
That's the way you're, yes, that's the way.
We don't have staff in the study halls, we have staff at the library.
Not with the other cuts that we have also proposed or, that are on the table for the high school for next year.
So students that don't have a study hall during that open period, they will not have access to their library?
That's correct, except for if they run the class.
I think one of the things that we had to share with you far also would be the financial impact of this resolution, it would be an additional $60,000 reduction.
How many personnel would we be losing by this?
It would be two, it would be, it would be, well, it's one, sorry, it's one, but it might have ramifications with partial, partial FTEs for those people.
You know, with all these curtailments that we've given us, I have approached it as, is there a suitable viable alternative for these? And I don't see a viable alternative for this because you're going to close the library for 50% of the time, and the probability that a student that needs to get access has a study hall during the time it's open is limited. So we always have looked at the library as the focal point of education to do the research, and we're closing one of our greatest resources.
Again, I appreciate that.
I just, I need to share that with the board because I don't see a viable alternative. If we're going to curtail a program, we have to give an alternative. Closing the program is, the library is not acceptable.
That's what I asked, can we staff by a teacher that is, like we're being here. No, there isn't going to be any other way to staff that library with the cuts of the program.
Can we staff with a volunteer? Do you just have the doors open or something like that, is that a pressure bargaining issue?
There may be some pressure bargaining issues, and then we raise the question, if I remember that.
I don't even think we can staff it with a name.
No.
I think this is bad for education. I'd like to make a motion to table.
Is that the second on the table? I just need to clarify.
Yeah, there was, it was Mr. Cox. No, no, I told you, there is a motion table, is there a second?
There was a first and there was a second on the table, so.
There was?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
No, no, Mr. Cox, you seconded the motion table?
Yeah.
There's a vote on the motion table?
We discussed the table?
No, you don't discuss the motion table in person, it's probably introduced.
So this vote is to table the motion?
Correct.
Just for clarity. Mrs. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
No.
Ms. Fodaski?
No.
Mr. Salmonara?
No.
Mrs. Spessett?
No.
And Mr. Basil?
No.
Okay, the motion to table was defeated, so the original motion for the curtailment is back on the table.
I mean, my personal opinion on this is, you know, as with all of these, we have to look at everything within the spectrum of ideas for budget cuts, and none of them are palatable, but that's a discussion for a later time, whether we would or not enact something like this. Let's find out for PDE whether this is something we can even do. PDE may be asking the same questions that we're asking tonight and say, wait a minute, you don't have an alternative program right now, you can't do it. I don't know.
I don't think PDE is going to look into it that deeply.
Well, if they don't, then they don't, but at the end of the day, we need to get an answer, and then as a board, we can deliberate on whether the validity of this suggestion in context with everything else that's out there. I mean, we're in the process of talking to the tractor parties, we're waiting for the state to get back to us with answers. There's a long way to go yet in this budget process, and I think taking options off the table is fiscally irresponsible.
But Dr. Otto, are you telling us right now that there's no way you would staff that thing that would be closed for half the day? Are you already telling us that that's the answer you're going to give us?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what the rest of the text.
I think this goes back to the philosophy of education that one of our members of the audience raised earlier, you know, we're supposed to be about education, and I think the library is a place for the kids to do research, open projects, and so forth, and I think it would be a crime to close this half the day that the students don't have the access to this.
Mr. Ross, I agree with that, that reason, we did not want to get a vote like that in both, and it's not even a draw. I think it is a draw. Go right now, you don't have that issue.
Okay, any other comments from board? It's been done, roll call both.
Mr. McColl?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Shaheen?
No.
Ms. Fodaski?
No.
Mr. Salmonara?
No.
But no, Mrs. Hartzell?
No.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion defeated.
Okay, moving on to 14F, just recommended the board, the directors approve the resolution regarding curtailment and alteration of the elementary band program as presented by the solicitor.
I'd like to make a motion to change that due to the efforts of Mr. Mondock and Daniel Newton, on changing that to the re-ophenomenal fourth grade band program and not fifth grade, with possible five coming to support fourth grade.
We don't need permission to curtail fourth grade.
Well, before we only were talking about fourth grade, now we're talking about fourth grade instead.
But I'm saying, we don't need permission from fourth grade. We're not eliminating the band program. Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I just want to say.
Right now, there's no real motions on the table.
Yeah, I asked for a motion.
Okay, so move.
Don't move.
For what?
For the motion that it stands, we can discuss it, we can, we can at least get it off the table, we can discuss it.
Who is the second on that?
I'll second.
Now we can discuss it.
In light of the information that was shared tonight, that was put together by Mr. Snaveley, I'd really like to see us take a little more time and look into this. If you've read what this is saying, this is saying that this is a short-term budget cut which results in a great deal of additional expense down the road to the district, and quite frankly, I think that doesn't make any sense. I think that this is an item which we were planning to discuss at this week's curriculum committee meeting, and I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
It's not a curriculum, it might be, because it hasn't got approval from the state. I mean, we've been discussing, we've got approval from the state, and the board's asked us to discuss it or look at it for curriculum committee, so we're not looking at it for curriculum.
Okay, Dr. Hartzell, on the same type of format, Dr. Otto, could you basically summarize what this resolution is saying and highlight what the alternative is if we approve this? I think that's important for all of this stuff. Again, I'm going to go back to, if we're going to curtail something, there's got to be a viable alternative.
Well, at this point, if we again apply to the state for the reduction, we'd have to come back to the board to decide whether or not the full cut would be made and we would further the appropriate staff. In terms of the, in making the cut, it would eliminate the grade four and five pull-out band and choir programs as we have them, and what would remain is the regular music instruction program that's required by chapter four.
But the alternative is, if I read this resolution, it says, in conjunction with this program elimination, the district will explore the feasibility of offering a fee-based after-school band and concert program for fourth and fifth grade elementary school students.
Yes, that is an option.
That's.
That would be a viable option.
Now, as I understand it, the past year, we had numerous discussions on the fact that we cannot charge a fee for upgraded classes.
That's correct.
So the only way we could explore this fee program out of school is if we.
It's an extracurricular.
Curtail back that program and they get extra curriculum.
That would be a viable option.
In all due respect, if we've also said that we can offer full-day kindergarten through donations to a separate entity who donates money to the district, I don't understand why we couldn't do the same thing with band. I don't see the difference. I think that I've heard loud and clear from a number of constituents, it was even mentioned in tonight's meeting by Sherri Mondock, the interest in pay-to-play. I think that there's no question that the parents of the fourth and fifth grade band students, who this is a vital part of their education, would be willing to pay for the privileges using it, even if it doesn't go directly to the district, goes through an intermediary entity like the Daniel Boone Music Boosters. I have mentioned this every time this matter's come up, and I don't understand why people don't seem to be listening, that the parents of these students who will be impacted want to see this program continue. If you eliminate fourth and fifth grade band, this is the time when students learn to play an instrument. If that's taken away, there won't be a band, there won't be any band whatsoever 10 years down the road in school districts where that's been done. The band simply dries up and goes away. All the studies have shown that students take an interest in the band and learning, the ideal time for them to take an instrument is in the fourth grade, and this would essentially kill our program. And one of the things that I must say, and I know there are a number of people that have kids in the band, a number of the people sitting on this table have had children in the band, including myself. I think half of the people sitting up here have had children in the band. This is a marvelous program. We have one of the finest music programs in the county, and I think we should be proud of it, and I can't see us killing this program to save a few dollars, especially when the parents have already come out and said, we're willing to pay to play. I think we should look to alternative ways of doing this, much like we're doing with the kindergarten program, long before we talked about curtailling this program.
I just want to make a couple of clarifications. And one thing with the kindergarten program, what we, what my opinion was as to what the board could do was to accept a charitable donation, targeted donation, with the condition that the board use that money to continue a full-day kindergarten program. That's different than pay to stay. We're not requiring any particular student to pay to go to a full-day kindergarten program. So we're not requiring anyone to pay for a curriculum program. What we're saying is if the public can come up with a charitable contribution in the amount of $425,000, which were the savings to be realized by the alteration of the kindergarten program, then we would not proceed with that alteration, we would continue to provide the full-day kindergarten program for the next fiscal year because that's what that donation would cover, and that would be the condition of that donation being made to the school district. And that's proper, that's legal, we can do that. But we're not requiring any particular student, and we're not making it a requirement for admission to full-day kindergarten program that your parent made a contribution. We're accepting a lump sum contribution from the public with the condition that we use that contribution to continue a full-day kindergarten program for the next fiscal year. So if you want to do something like that.
Yeah, Mr. Ross. Mr. Subers, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, we talked about this adopt the program initiative that's coming out of revenue enhancement, and the board agreed that the committee continue to pursue that, and it is exactly what we're talking about here, where we'll have somewhat of an à la carte menu of every program in the district, whether it's a suffering program or whether it's a thriving program, and the community has the ability to donate funds and earmark that money toward those programs. And that's what we're talking about in revenue enhancement, it's the exact model that Mr. Ross is talking about. We can't do a pay-to-play, so let's come up with some other alternative where we can have money seeded into those programs.
This may not be the object, but it's not a safe word created in. We don't need the regulations to do that. I'm going to wish to table this one, so we can break it back.
Second.
I think that, I have a problem with a terminated teacher to be able to get, it's on a, I don't think it's a great, we're going to run it again. Again, it's not a safe word, I know this, but no, I think we need to.
Is there a second on the table?
Yes, I'd second it.
I don't know if I can table it, but I think we need to resolve it within a month.
You can't.
Excuse me, first is second. Sorry, sorry, it's a second. Mr. Ross is the second, and the first is Mr. Shaheen, the second is Mr. Ross. Motion to table. Roll call, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Fodaski?
No.
Salmonara?
No.
Mrs. Spessett?
No. Mrs. Hartzell? Yes.
Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. McColl?
No.
And Mr. Basil?
No.
Motion defeated.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think anybody here wants to cut band over it, but I sat in the audience last year and listened to you guys talk about what we're wanting to say to these young ones. I think we can't, I mean, I'm not saying we can cut it, we're just asking if we can or can't cut it. If we send a resolution, it may take them five months to figure out the same instrument, and in the meantime, we could vote for an alternative. But if we don't, we're not going to know, and we're going to sit here and we're going to be discussing the same thing for three months from now, like it was discussed last year. I mean, you're running in a circle.
I think we understand the validity of the program, I mean, there's perp benefits. This is an issue about whether or not it's good for kids or difficult for kids. I think we all agree that the program is fabulous for students in school, but the issue is a financial one.
But I think unfortunately, being a financial issue, if PDE comes back and says, yes, you can do it, we're going to be put under pressure to do it instead of looking elsewhere. So I think that's the only reason I brought up, you know, fourth grade's gone.
I hear what you're saying.
It's going to be hard to bring it back, but we need to at least probably save fifth grade, and that was my point, to at least start learning an instrument in the elementary school.
Are they not learning an instrument in the regular music instruction program?
No, this is the program where they learn to play an instrument. Maybe you don't understand that.
Can they not learn an instrument in an after-school program?
They learn band.
Okay, look, at the end of the day, we have a $7.3 million, I keep reminding everybody of this, where is the money going to come from? It's not coming from the money tree outside, that's dead.
In all due respect, Mr. Basil, we have been talking about another alternative way to fund this through some kind of a donation.
We talked about, kindergarten is well, but we still had to make some decisions, and kicking the can down the road is fiscally irresponsible.
I respectfully disagree with you. I would say this, when we brought this up last year, we got petitions from both sides by over 750 residents of this school district opposing this decision, and when this board, at the April meeting, this is only 10 months ago, saw the reaction from this community, we took it right off the table, and I might remind Mr. Shaheen, is the person who made that motion to take this off the table, because, and the discussion was to take it off the table permanently, because this is something which is good for the kids, good for the district, and good for education, and we should, and talking about philosophy, this is one of the best things. Let me tell you something, my kids have both recently graduated from this school district, and I will tell you, the music program has been a vital part of both of their lives and continues to be. That would. That would not be the case, except for the fact that we have fourth and fifth grade band, and they work with these teachers who struggled through them squeaking and squealing and so forth and so on until they finally learned how to play their first instrument. We have one of the finest music programs in the county, maybe even in the state, sitting right here in Daniel Boone, and it would be a shame to lose it over a few dollars, especially when the parents have expressed the willingness to pay for it. Let's work on win faces.
We have a challenge, we raise, send out empty people to go out and raise funds. Nothing's preventing people from making a donation to the school district.
Then we should take it off the table, give them the opportunity, just like we do with the kindergarten program.
We can take it off the table.
You can't take this off the table. It's not, it's not, it's on the table. We voted to keep it on the table.
No, no, I mean, we should forget about this, we should move on to other things that are non-curricular and so forth, and not hurt the students, which is, this is something which would terribly hurt these students.
Mr. Ross, there's very, we've heard from our administration that there are very little places left to go in making cuts in our budget. We have to align our operating costs with our operating revenues. Our revenues are not going up. Give me a second. I've listened to you. Give me a second, okay? We have 20,000 people that live in this school district. We have a responsibility to the other 19,250 people who pay taxes here, okay? There are 750 people who signed a petition last year. I encourage them to come to the revenue enhancement committee meeting next week and work with us on a solution to this problem. It doesn't stop us from working on a solution. We've been talking about this for three months. Everybody needs to come together and work together, come up with a solution to these problems, which means raising revenue. Everybody's got to reach in their pocket to raise revenue. At the same time, as a board, we have a fiscal responsibility to balance this budget. Taking options off the table, quarter million dollars is what's being discussed in the last two budget items, off the table does not get us to balancing the budget. It's not a popular thing to say, I realize that, but it's the fiscally responsible thing to say.
You're, I, I, I mean, quarter million dollars for one band teacher and two part-time librarians?
No, it's not a quarter million dollars at all. It's $180,000 for the elementary band, about $60,000 or-
No, it was $180,000.
$143,000, okay, $200,000. In a budget, we're having a hard time finding $10,000 at this point.
In all due respect, Mr. Basil, I know you're concerned about the taxpayers. We also have to concern ourselves with the students. Maybe we should think about them at some point. This is, you talk about revenue, this is an area where the parents have expressed a willingness to pay. Let's go back to administration and work out a process, much like we're talking about with the kindergarten, that the parents can pay for this program.
Mr. Ross, I totally agree with that, but the problem with that is it's been asked before, and we keep, we get nowhere. My frustration level is that, like Mr. Fadaski said, we did this a year ago and nothing has changed.
Then let's charge with administration with getting a plan to do this for the next meeting.
We did that a year ago, and now we're talking about a year later. That's my frustration level. Again, you want to do that, my students are going through the band program too. I still have one in senior high school. You know, my frustration level is let's watch it for all sobbing, but every year it's only 10, 11 months later, and we're still no closer to where our actual numbers are, what's going on, whether the parents are going to pay for it. It's, you know, eventually you've got to make a decision. That's the frustration level I see as a parent. It's not that I want to hurt the elementary school program, no. I have three children go through it, but the frustration, like Mr. Basil said, you've got to make a determination, and every time we get to the point at this point, we get new data and new information. Either the administration supports it or they don't. But we can conflict the answer from administration, we can conflict the numbers, we can conflict the stats, we get everything, and after a while, it's like, no, watch it fall, pick it, let's go and decide.
Dr. Ross, is this a feasible conversation that you had with this Mondak today about this program? Trying to save?
I think there's some willingness on the part of the, we didn't really talk specifics about things that she proposed, but I think I sense a willingness to, I don't want to speak for you, maybe if you want to, I mean, I know we-
No, it's not.
Sorry, sorry. But I hope I'm fairly representing our conversation today, that I thought it was open and honest, and I expressed a lot of the things I've just said here tonight about the large budget deficits and the fact that no one really wants to cut these programs, but again, we're trying to work tools to, in the event, Mr. Shaheen, you mentioned earlier in this board meeting, something I hadn't even heard, that sent shivers through my spine while pointing back to the '05, '06 ones. There are realities. We could even have less. So-
You know, let's, excuse me, let's put this thing to bed, let's vote on it, okay? And I'm going to tell you what, let's vote on it, and I, although I voted the table, let's send it to PDE, and when they come back and say no, because I'm going to be very surprised if PDE votes to curtail a music program or any type of program, then it's done, and we can move on to something else.
But I think that, oh, go ahead, sir. It's bad for education, we shouldn't even go that far. We should, so we should stop it right here, this is ridiculous.
And the administration's got to go find something else.
Let's charge them with finding something else instead of taking away a valuable program.
What about kindergarten?
Why does he need us to do this for them to come up with ideas? Not just, not just the band boosters, I'm talking to the administration. Why is it that once they're back against the wall, they, everybody knew this was going to happen back in January? The boosters knew about it, the administration knew about it. Now again, we're, we're, we're moving to the last minute, and yet all we have is a resolute pause.
If 800 people came in with a petition for kindergarten, will we backpedal? If 1,000 people came in with a petition for middle school sports, are we going to backpedal?
The more questions-
I'm sure these people can go out and get petitions for-
I might remind you, we represent those people out there.
I know, and I'm saying everybody can get-
Some of us seem forgotten.
No, what I'm saying is everybody can get a petition for one. You could get a petition for every, everything, you could get a petition for example, 1,000 people. I mean, no, we're not here every meeting because we're having fun. I mean, we're not, this is hard for us, okay? But we're running in a circle, or we can stay in there.
It's not funding this program, is it?
Okay. I just want to clarify two things. There are two things that go around this table. Keep comparing it to kindergarten program. The reality is that we cut the kindergarten program, and after we cut it, a group came to us saying, "If we find money for it, will you restate it?" But with that, it was conditioned, they would have to fund the money at a time.
Do it annually, too.
Right. So we'll gather the forces to see if they find it, what do we lose by doing with PDE? That's my first question. My second question that I keep hearing is, parents will pay for this, why can't they work if it's regular? And I'm sort of saying, we are the good say, we're going into policy. There are very few areas where we can charge a fee. This is one area because we do have an intact music program. This is beyond the in-school class music class that we can ask for a fee for. It's a little, I don't understand why we're going to go down that path.
I wouldn't stop at just saying, go down that road, it's just a fee. Mrs. Fasat, it's also donations. I think that's the key difference, is it's donations, that we could raise, we could raise money for the things that this community cares most about, and they can earmark that money in the form of donations so that we can continue these programs, and we don't have to worry about, is it a pay-to-play, does it have to be extracurricular instead of co-curricular? We don't even need to go down that route. I mean, we, the only viable solution to me with all of these, not just music, but all of these programs, is to give us the opportunity to accept these donations.
We know in the county, Governor Mittman instituted an after-school fee because last year they got a lot of press that they were cutting their elementary band program. Can we get information on that in the next few months? We're waiting for PDE. PDE, so how many months to come back for kindergarten? We might get a kindergarten, this ruling on this music program for this one.
I don't know for sure. My understanding is that PDE is getting a lot more requests, and they are beginning to respond more quickly.
So maybe you got out of time or budget for it?
I guess what it is, I'm open to anything, but again, we're getting the same, only the same ideas, and I'm not saying they're bad, but we need new ones. Like I said, Governor Mitt, like we did it in the past, but I think that came up four months ago. But again, now it's four months later, and we still go now at work. As a board member, that's the most frustrating part of this vote tonight, is the lack of information, and like Mr. Fadaski said, it seems they're going around in a circle about it. Any ideas are far forward, but you know, if you can't, if all of them come from nine or 10 of us, then let's, you know, come up with them, but no one seems to do it now or after.
So, so instead of curtailing the program, let's charge the administration with coming back with a reasonable solution within the next 30 days, and this board, if we're talking about the likelihood that PDE isn't going to act with us for several months, what is the rush to voting to curtail it right now?
We are not voting to curtail the program.
You're voting?
We are voting to ask PDE if we have the right to curtail the program. It's a completely separate issue, you're clouding the issue.
Well, maybe if your kids were participating in the program, you wouldn't feel so clouded. I don't feel-
Mr. Ross, it's inappropriate. It's inappropriate.
This is a valuable program for these students. It's a valuable program to all these parents who have the students go through this, and we represent those parents and those students.
Motion for recess.
I think we need a motion for recess.
Motion for recess.
Second.
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Okay, if we call this, we can call a question.
Second.
It's immediate, we have to vote, that's a, an essence of motion to close debate and call the question, a subject to an immediate vote, that requires a two-thirds vote to succeed. If it does obtain that two-thirds vote, then you actually vote for, the next vote would be on the motion, the original motion.
Okay, so this roll call vote is called for, and, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Fadaski?
Yes.
Mr. Sam and Alex?
Yes.
Sad, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Now, as for our tools, then that brings the original motion, which was the recommendation to curtail the alteration of the elementary band program as presented by the solicitor. It was originally moved by Shaheen and seconded by Ms. Fadaski, so this is now the vote for that one. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Fadaski?
Yes.
Mr. Sam and Alex?
Yes.
Mrs. Sad, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to policy, it's recommended the board reference revised policy number 202 eligibility of non-residents to-
It's off now, you want it on?
It should be on.
It's off. Do you want it on or off?
It should be on.
No, it's not.
It should be on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, roll call, any just going to another floor? Same none, roll call.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Fadaski?
Yes.
Mr. Sam and Alex?
Yes.
Mrs. Sad, yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCollum?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on to 15B, first reading acknowledgement of revised policy number 114 extracurricular co-curricular activities, that's why it's not a motion. I'm sorry, first reading, sorry. On that subject, this has come up a couple of times now, once in the activity committee meeting, and then actually at the committee of the whole meeting earlier this month, where it's been suggested that a fee be charged for ban in order to keep the program. You know, if we pass this resolution, that really can't be done, and so I don't know whether we discuss this a little bit more before we move forward, give it pause, or just move forward with it, but I just want to make sure that we had this discussion, sort of been alluded to earlier tonight. If there's a fee for these after-school programs, I'm sorry, there's a grade for these after-school programs, which is what this policy now puts in place, there cannot be a fee for these programs.
That's, that's right.
But you can curtail the program. But you can curtail the program, and apparently we can't accept donations.
Right, okay. I just wanted to get that point out.
Okay, but-
It's just a question.
Yeah, we're implementing a policy, so before we start moving forward with it, I just want to make sure we're all, this came up in the committee, and at the committee of the whole, the activity committee meeting, and at the committee of the whole meeting, and there seemed to be some confusion about what we could and couldn't charge fees for, and I want to make sure that everybody understands what the policy would or not allow.
We actually started this discussion with your, our curriculum committee revisited this policy, and then that was pre-budgeted, so the recommendation of the curriculum committee was to keep it as a co-curricular activity. Now that we're all through the painful process of the budget, and realizing that we like this losing the program or having it curtailed, I think we need to ask the question again, is this what we want? Because we're losing an option that like, next, if it survives this year, next year might begin again, beginning of the session, and we're likely losing that option.
My question is, is this administration's recommendation?
I wasn't making any recommendations. I just brought this up on my own position based on-
Has administration viewed this enough to say this is what they want, not just next year, the long term?
In my conversations with the high school administration, any department that has ever-
I know we can't charge a fee for the activity, but-
If it has a grade.
If it has a grade, and specifically, I mean, what this was brought around was correctly banned, margin. Can we charge a transportation fee?
Does, if the activity where they're being transported to-
Is graded.
Is part of the required curriculum that it's being graded for, then I would say no. And I just want to clarify that this area of the law is very gray. Clearly, you can charge for extracurricular activities, no one's debating that. Charging for co-curricular activities is a much more aggressive stance, and is going to, you know, and is much more subject to challenge. There's no case law on or point on this issue, so I see my prior opinion, I clearly stated that the conservative approach would be not to require a charge of fee for any graded course.
And I think as a member of the curriculum committee, I mean, I know we did recommend that we do this, and I think it was administration's recommendation because of concern for the program and what we have for the program if we cannot do a graded course.
The feedback from the- I'm sorry.
No, but I, I think as Mrs. Fasat had said, that that does leave a hand tie if we can't charge that. So if that's the recommendation from administration, that we can charge a fee someday, and then considering curtailling.
You know, it is only a first reading. I challenge administration to again go back, meet with the department, and let us know at the committee of the whole meeting if this is going to be one of our fees, because I think we're in a different situation now than when we were in the summer.
And I, I mean, I've heard from some schools' parents, well, you know, why do we have to pay for speed for sports band lessons? I understand it's a graded course. I clearly understand that's the differentiation, but some parents don't necessarily understand when they're both expending funds for after-school and medium classes. So.
Then there's going to be a recommendation for the activity to be charged for sports and extracurriculars, so no one's aware.
The recommendation is it has addressed athletics, and it has addressed clubs, and has not addressed extracurricular music.
Correct.
Or co-curricular, we can't do co-curricular.
We can't do co-curricular.
Dr. Ross, very specifically, look to potentially have the after-school portion not be graded and the middle school portion be graded, and if that's not going to be a recommendation that comes back from them, then we need to stay co-curricular.
And we have actually discussed that, and there hasn't been a finalized decision We have actually been back and discussed that, that issue of the higher degree program.
And I understand that just the board, where if we would change this policy reading, we would have to make a revision of course election. Good for me.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, same done. Um, moving on, discussion of committee meetings. This is a quick recap. I was at PSE meeting, um, where this issue came up, that pretty much committees, um, and subcommittees and committees of the whole, and what I needed to be keeping minutes. Um, and I confirmed this with our solicitor. I shared with all of you the solicitor's opinion on what the bare-bones requirements of those meetings were, that began a large discussion here at the board level as, um, what was required by a law, who would approve the minutes, um, and then, as a subtext of that, can minutes be recorded? And if they're recorded, would those become the, the meetings of minutes of record, where they have to have them transcribed? So...
Did you need approval prior to recording?
Yep, all of those questions came up. So, um, Mr. Subers is now in the hot seat, they answered the, a lot of these questions. So, maybe you can just start off with what's required by the law in terms of the committees, and this board, when they're beat, in terms of what, what items are required to be approved of the minutes, uh, who would actually take the minutes, who approves the minutes at a, at a subcommittee level, is it just those members on the subcommittee? So...
The requirement of the sunshine act is not only that all board meetings be implemented in the sunshine, but also committees of the board. So, committees of the board are subject to the sunshine law. One of the, there's two basic requirements, that we conduct your meeting in the public, that it's ad and advertised, a public reading, and that you keep minutes of that meeting. The requirements for the meeting minutes is only that you record the date, time, and place of the meeting, the names of the members present, and the substance of all official actions, and a record of the vote. And then the final thing would be the name of all citizens who appeared officially in the subject of their testimony. So, for committee meetings, because there is no official action, you're not voting on anything at your committee meetings, you really, the bare-bones requirement would be the date, time, and place of the meeting, and the names of members present. Um, you're not required, one, one difference between a committee meeting, a, a meeting of a full board is you're not required to accept a public comment, or provide for a public comment during a committee meeting, because there is no board action. You're only required to accept board, a public comment rather, where there's going to be board action. So, um...
So, based on what you just said, the curriculum committee meeting's going to have a date, a time, a place, and the four board members, and that's the minimum?
That's the, that's the minimum. That would satisfy the requirements, and that would be approved by the committee itself, as a committee meeting. So, that would be approved by the, uh, committee, and that's, that's really all you have.
So, Mr. Subers, if I wanted to take more thorough minutes, and have those minutes approved by the board, and ultimately, you know, published to the, to the website or whatever, being the chair of, of the committee, I don't have time to take the minutes and stay engaged with the meeting. Could I use a voice recorder to record those minutes, so that I can later transcribe into a document those minutes? Or does that voice recording need to become the permanent minutes to that meeting?
A lot of, of school districts have their meetings recorded. And, and the typical practice, or the most common practice is to use those recordings, the secretary would use those to create the minutes. But then, once those minutes are created, because while in a board meeting, that, those minutes are the record of the official action. They control. Once those minutes are prepared typically, a board would reuse that page, or delete that recording. That's the common practice. Um, if you have, if you maintain those recordings, they would be subject to, uh, to the right to number.
If we, if we recorded the committee meetings on a voice recorder, and said, these are my minutes, I have no paper minutes, this recording is the minutes. And maybe that, maybe the paper minutes is nothing more than the minimum, like you said. Is, is that acceptable?
As long as you have that paper, that's minimal on paper, you can, you can create any additional record you want. But be aware that if you create and maintain that record, it's subject to public inspection.
But that's the purpose of, that would be the purpose of it, is to, is to put it on the internet, so the public who can't come to the meeting, they can plug in and listen to what happens.
It's not the minutes, um, that's...
But, 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 but those recordings, if they're approved by the board, you put on the website. I mean, what you cut, it doesn't, it's not... And does the board have to approve it being recorded, period? For members of that committee? Because in other words, if I'm not on that committee, it's a, it's a, I'm not, I can't vote, so I can't accept the minutes in this meeting to reach them out, or whatever you wrote under the minutes.
Well, you wouldn't be approving the...
I think Mr. Sumanero just asked, can those be included on by the board, if you put on...
Can we stop about the subcommittee?
The subcommittee. Whatever the process is. Let, let me get to, let me get to the question.
Talk about the subcommittee first.
Yeah, let, let me get to the question. The question is, I'm on the revenue enhancement committee, and I want to record that meeting. And then I want that meeting recording to be available to the public, so they can all listen to that meeting.
That's a board decision. I think it's up to the...
Okay, what, give me the process. What would we do? I would have to go in and ask permission before I start the meeting?
I think that you, you decide as a board whether or not you're going to permit your committee meetings to be recorded.
I think that's an individual committee decision. I think board members of his committee decide whether they want to have their committee recorded. Uh, I mean, yeah, just firstly, I mean, because we're not there, so what we're saying for members of his committee is going to be recorded, and...
Abs, okay, absent your policy addressing that issue, I would agree. But, you know, the, the, recording of something, you know, on the district's website, um, you know, I mean, again, that's not, it's not legally required, but I think that you should reach consensus as to whether or not you want that published in that format. You can do it, but...
Okay, no, we just want to understand what the process needs to be. And, and how about regular board meetings? Can we do the same thing? Can you record?
But, but I guess my question is back to the committee, if I, if I allow that to be on the website, am I allowing, assuming...
There's, there's no action. No, no, there's no action. There's no action taken at a committee meeting. So, what, you're, you're just allowing them to carry what went on at the committee meetings? It's not going to...
My question, in our, our council committees, it's up to the chair whether to allow a public comment. If the chair does allow a public comment, does that need to be part of the...
That should be...
Okay.
What, just the name and the address of the...
It's, it's a subject, you know, it's a subject of the...
So, it would be like more than set, but more...
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, that's...
It doesn't really say, like, more than a guess, just a...
Well, you know, really...
Well, that's something you can accept public comment.
Well, we do, I mean, curriculum committee, we accept public, we don't make them come up to elector, and everything's set, ready, but you will... So, now we have to ask who they are, and, and somebody's going to have to record it. Who, who they are, what they say. It's more of a, an informal, family-style type of a conversation. We, we converse, it's not a, please come up, come in the middle, but...
Well, you know what, the, the law reads the name of all citizens who appear officially in the subject of their testimony.
Okay, so officially, if, if you're getting up to elector, that's one thing, you're just sitting there raising your hand, is that official?
I think if it's just an open, ongoing discussion between the, the public and committee members, I would say that it's not required.
Are you adverse to recording them? Voice, you know, voice recording? Just out of curi, I mean, you have, need time to think about it, but I'm just curious.
I need time to think about it.
Because, I mean, I, I'm, me for one, I would, I would like to be able to listen to some of the other committees that I, I'm not on. You know, it's very difficult...
In fact, because, because, if somebody's standing up and saying something out here in the curriculum meeting, maybe saying something, it's not possible, maybe they don't want themselves recorded. Somebody coming to the revenue enhancement committee may not want themselves recorded.
Well, certainly if you are recording something, it should be announced to everyone present...
Correct.
That it's been recorded, and you can't surreptitiously record...
Even if you're, even if you're recording it to write down minutes, and then you delete the recording?
You're not, but, but you now really know that they're being paid for, that their conversation is being recorded.
Okay.
So that there's no expectation of privacy or state, see that?
Got it.
That's the only wide...
If they're recorded, please, please. This, this is not free for public comment.
All right, so moving on. Um, well, the other question is, the committee of the whole, um...
Right.
It seems to me that if we're required to have minutes, I, I mean, I don't think we've been keeping minutes for the last seven years I've been on this board, for the committee of the whole. I've never seen minutes on that. And, and while we don't take any action at that, we discuss all the topics, it seems to me that would be the primary place we would focus on as far as... Although, I think if the committee of the whole, we do take a work call, and we do have an agenda, but we don't have, we do, there's no official minutes, but we do publish with Republicans, we do, we do sign in. But, that's not official minutes, so we need to be doing that more.
Well, we should start coming forward, taking...
Some sort of official minute.
Can we, uh, can we, can we record them? I mean, again, I, I can supply the voice recorder, and we can just sit it on a table and record them. Does anyone have issue with that?
And who would be in possession of the tapes? If we would go that way, I would think they would have to be district code, and kept in a central location for access to the public.
No, it'll be a digital file, but, yeah.
Yeah, it does, again, it's not subject to any specific legal requirement, I think that that practice would be...
Can there just be something that's got these things, and these recordings?
Right.
I mean, everything would be done now.
What, what I would suggest is that the next committee of the whole, we voice-record the meeting. And then we, who, who does the minutes? Linda actually goes through the minutes? It will give her something that she can look back and listen to, and be able to document the minutes a little more thoroughly, or at all, if we haven't been doing it.
I know, and it is, I, I heard it's the minutes of the last week, if it was that, I mean, please remedy the microphone situation.
Maybe more than one hour.
You can't, you can't hear it.
Well, Margaret, the issue is, with that recording, is it was here. You know, if we, if we stick it right in the middle...
No, but, I, I know, it was there, and I was in here, and I could...
Not illegal, okay.
They could record it. So, if they're not, like, let's be honest.
Also, the public, if you're going to record it, we're in a conference, you don't have to be here and...
Sure.
Yeah, I think if, if we're going to be...
Can we not tie the recording into the mic and back?
We, we can. I'm trying to offer a, a zero-cost solution that'll get this thing done quickly, so, so... And my objective of it is not to keep better minutes, honestly. My objective is to get these meetings out to the public, so more people can hear what we're discussing. Because not everyone can come to these meetings. And they hear things, and they read things, and they're not accurate sometimes. And this gives them the opportunity to tap into that, and listen to what we've said for the past two and a half hours.
Well, and my own concern with that is, I hope they listen to the problems at the beginning, at the end, because some things could be taken out of context. If you just put that, it wasn't for the first fifteen minutes, and you don't hear the rest.
It, no worse than what could be written on paper, though.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. Well, then, you know, again, we had to remedy the microphone situation, and find a place to put it. I mean, I don't have a problem being recorded. Um, I'm certainly not necessarily going to look to do it at a curriculum meeting. Those that are interested, that have shown up one way or another, and it's recorded, and it's, it's tweeted and everything else at the same time, and I'm sure that the individual out here is doing this right now, so it's kind of being recorded on, so...
Well, again, if no one has any objections at the next committee of the whole, I'll bring the recorder. And again, that could become district property. I don't mind, I, I, I have two of them, we can, we can have, you can have both of them. And we can start, we could record it and see how it goes, and see if anyone has any objection to it, or if we find issues.
Is it, is it, are we all up that mic, and we can't?
Right, right. I can't fix that problem, but Dr. Otto, if you can help with that.
If we can share a mic for two people, but one for more people is not...
Yeah, yeah, I think there's two problems with the setup. We don't have enough mics up here, and also, I don't know about you, but I can't see when these people are speaking. And Margaret, I bet you're in the same situation.
I can't see this podium at all.
Yeah, I, I'd like this to be angled slightly, so that all the board members can actually see the public, because it's very beautiful. When people actually speak to us, not that we're seeing, and it looks like we're not paying attention, and I assure you I am, but, uh, yeah.
We may not need to stand. So, what's going on in here?
That's a good idea, put one in the center.
That's going to be on then? So, we could do a central mic?
I, I can, yes, we could.
Okay, maybe we could look at that, then.
Right, but if not, maybe we could just angle it slightly, so that we could actually see. That would be helpful.
If we do committee of the whole with minutes, then will they also be included as part of our voting minutes? Like, we would be approving?
Yeah, they would, they would. Subject to board vote.
All right, so recap. Subcommittees need a few minutes, um, date, time, people present, that's what we're taking, public comment, who spoke, what the subject matter was. It just needs to be approved by the members of the subcommittee. Um, in terms of the committee of the whole, I think the rules apply, it would be approved by the entire board. And you can report, you can announce that you're recording, and...
I would, I would announce that your, the meetings are being recorded.
At the bare minimum, the recording, even with the recording, uh, recorded minutes, you still need to have some sort of paper minutes with the bare minimum requirements.
Correct. Okay. Question, does this apply to all committees? For example, if we have a negotiating committee, I don't think that...
That's not, that's outside of the sunshine law. A negotiating committee would mean an executive session, because you're dealing with labor negotiations.
I think same thing would true for me to discuss.
Correct.
Okay. And executive sessions, too.
Transportation, too. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? All right, same guy, moving on to transportation.
We, we are going to meet with our...
Great.
Prior to curriculum.
We are meeting with our transportation companies on Thursday.
Prior to the curriculum committee meeting to discuss, uh, oh, my... Have any potential, uh, savings, or ideas they have, or they came, they were a couple ideas last year, and we're going to ask them if they've got any other ideas we could utilize to cut down our transportation costs.
Great, uh, moving on. Old business, new business.
I do. I have a question. Can I, if I were to, if I were to talk about, uh, the gate system, or the key system, and maybe, or, or...
My understanding, facilities committee had, um, the gate system, the board approved the pay for the gate system. Um, when I was talking to Ken Smith today, he called me, let me go make a video, he said that he had another idea, uh, that may save the school district some money regarding the gate system, and he wanted to talk about it at the facilities committee, thanks, Monday.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, then that idea will be brought to the committee of the whole meeting?
Uh, yeah, we would, so, absolutely. Under new business.
I, I'd like to get, go back with the, the letter of the resolution to state, I don't know if it's going to get anywhere. Uh, I would go for it myself already. Again, we'll get an email back saying, thank you for your evening. Um, and that was all I got back. And I think that the board is going to, very, very, Dr. Otto grabbed the letter, asked them to do a minimum wage, which last year, above the summit, if not an increase, uh, I guess, the CBI was two percent, at least two percent over last year. May not yet anywhere. Other districts are doing it, um, maybe in their lists, parts that were already looking at that, but, I mean, I did, uh, let them know how deep this budget cuts are, are effective. ask them to do a minimum wage last year, whatever's on it. It's not an increase of, I guess, the CBI was 2%, at least 2% over last year. May not yet anywhere. Other districts are doing it. Maybe in their list, parts that were already looking at that, but, I mean, I did let know how deep his budget cuts are affecting us. So, we need to assign that, get, get, develop, uh, Secretary of Education, as well as the, our state Senator, the Republican.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. Thanks, Mr. Shasta.
But, but, yeah, the gap of lists, it'd be ideal to hear how to because of this budget.
Just a procedural issue. Do you want me to pen that under my name or do you want to-
No, I don't. I'll depend on the board, depend on, pen it and then each side of the division will turn it back.
Also, under new business, we had the people here tonight from the Rotary Club presenting an offer to fund the Interact Club for up to $2,000. Should we be taking some kind of an action on that to make some kind of indication in terms of what our approach should be? It seems to me this is a very generous-
I assume Mr. Schubert and, and, uh, Mr. Schubert said that any outside, continue to make charitable donations to the district. You're marketing for a specific entity, correct?
Charitable donation can-
Or a donation, a charitable donation.
It can be, it can be a conditional donation. And if we, we can accept it, subject to that condition.
But once I make that, okay, we can decide if we want to accept or not make that.
And I actually think maybe taking the subject of the answer may, may be a good vehicle for having more detailed discussions with them, with the Rotary Club on that particular issue.
Well, one of the things it seems to me is we probably should respond to them in some way, indicating what the cost is of operating that club to the district and see whether that falls within the budget in terms of what they're willing to say. Because I don't know as a board member what that cost is.
I think if your doc, uh, or, or members of that, 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 you not, was that not the only reason that they're using all of the cost? Or did we ask them to make a change?
The activity?
Had the base committee, uh-
No.
Or, then maybe Dr. Otto can determine, uh, what, what's the number?
One of the things that I wanted to point out was that we need to make a recognition that maybe cut Interact or any specific club, but what we're looking to do is charge an activity extracurricular fee to offset some of the costs of that.
I understand. You know, that, the person that is, is, uh, getting anything stipulated with that, gets, you can tell us that on the-
We just looked at the stipends, though. I think there are other costs involved in the clubs than just the stipends.
But, but, but if the stipend is $2,000 and that takes care of what they're willing to donate, and then maybe the activity fee puts that program over the top, then there's not a problem.
Right.
That's what we can, we can research.
Right. So, we, could we direct the administration to come back and determine what the cost would be of that program and to somehow communicate that to the representatives of the Rotary Club so they can determine whether they want to proceed with that? Because then we could take an action on that in a future meeting. But I think it's important for us to react in some fashion when they've made such a generous donation.
I know the activity fee committee that the proposal's not complete yet. There are still some situations we have to look at, and this is like the perfect example. If there is a club that is sponsored by a community group or an individual, you know, how do we handle that? We have not watched that because this is the first instance where it's, we've been approached with it, so I think that's something we should-
And, and the, I'm looking at the stipends-
We appreciate it all.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it all. And I'm looking at the stipend right now. It's about $1,030 and it moves up to $1,200 and something under the current contract. Uh, but that may not include all of the social security workers comp, benefits package, blah, blah, blah. So, it's, it could be substantially higher than that.
And, and as I just said, there are other associated costs involved in extracurriculars. If you looked at just field trips, um, we get those as informational. I'm, but I'm sure there are costs involved in here with all the transportation to these various things, which is rolled into, I think it's called the activities account pays for that?
Yes.
But that's also a cost of extracurricular. Well, student, what, is it dues? How, what's one, what funds the activities?
Any money that's in the activities comes off student rates. So, we also found that there were transportation costs associated with some of these things, fuel cost, you know, that sort of thing. It weren't, you just look at the stipend and that gives you, that's just one cost. There are other ancillary costs that are associated with some of these activities. And so, getting our arms around the total nut isn't exactly, we have some more work to do there. But I think the activities committee, we can certainly reach out to Rotary Club and give them some more definitive numbers on what the costs are for that particular club and any help you guys can provide, obviously, is greatly appreciated. Along the same lines, I think the board received an email regarding TSA. They were looking, sorry?
Just TSA.
TSA. Who was asking to see if they could fundraise them on their own as well. Obviously, I didn't, I didn't see any reason to object to that. I think it was just the board gave them some direction to go ahead and fundraise. Seeing no objections?
A concern I, I had is although we want to encourage people to sponsor and fundraise for these events, what happens? Are they then exempt from paying fees at that club? Because my concern, I'm gonna lay it out there, as a business owner, it's gonna be very divisive in the community. It's gonna be who knows who to get their club sponsored, and I don't think that's good for the overall community. So, I think we really need to have discussions as to whether that will just be helping to offset the whole extracurricular program and specifically protect that one, but the fee is not waived for those members. You know, in the high school, it was very easy because it's a one-time fee, but let's say you only belong to that one club that's being sponsored, do you waive that fee?
I don't think administratively you could do that. You could maybe waive some fees for some clubs and others not, you know?
It's going to just be, within the commu-, I think it's gonna be very divisive. Everybody's gonna be tapping the staple money and we have, I don't even know, 20 different clubs and then you have your athletes, then you have your music groups, we already have, um, three different booster groups. You know, I think we need to be sensitive to the community and how often they're getting solicited.
And you're also gonna have the question, I'm gonna play this out, which is the cost problem, is also a number of these clubs that charge dues. And I'm gonna pay $50 for my daughter to join the Spanish club and then additional $25, $30 dues.
We did that, alright.
Okay. So, are they still paying dues?
Yeah. Because the dues support the-
I mean, the overall-
The activities, I'm feeling, the, the fee is to keep pay set, not pay plus.
At the end of the day, it is a bit more information to the board, but at the end of the day, it is a couple of different numbers. One, we, we got from the high school was up $43,000 for all the extracurricular clubs. I think in our budget discussions here, we received from the administration's only $76,000. But the fee that's being proposed or discussed by the activity, the activity committee, which was $50, a one-time fee for his name, not just the Spanish club, but once you paid $50, it's for all the clubs your daughter wants to participate in, eight, nine, 10, 12 clubs, it's just a one-time fee. It only amounted to a $20,000 worth of revenue. So, it's not even covering the cost of the extracurricular programs, it's, it's helping to subsidize that total cost. I think with the TSA, they, they were talking about expanding that program in, in the email and trying to get more kids involved and that sort of thing, which would obviously probably increase the cost.
She has, she has been trying for years to get it off the high school and this may be that one.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's obviously value appropriate. So, Margaret, you think we should take that up in the activities committee along with the Rotary issue as well?
I think we do. I don't know if we need that, the, the large expanding group, it's more a board administrative discussion now.
Okay.
I, I don't know what's the board's input. The committee's made up of community members, administration, staff members, and then three board members. Because now it's how they administer the fee, not whether to charge, the original task of the committee, but what to charge, does it be, um, votes allowed or, and that's a whole, how to administer.
Perhaps, well, maybe it's a scaled down version of that committee to talk about the administration with the, and maybe in terms of these charitable donations, maybe we dovetail that in with the RE, what the REC is doing with the adopter program, that sort of go hand in glove there with, with these initiatives.
So, merge the two committees? You can't do that, you're not more than a forum?
Uh, I wasn't saying merge, maybe just divide the donation part from the, the activity fee part. Let's not commingle those two items. Let's resolve the fee issue first and how we process the fees, and then let our, the ready enhancement committee work on the donation aspect of, of how that reward for the clubs.
I mean, I think we still need one more activity fee committee because we never resolved the music extracurriculars and just the whole middle school and even elementary extracurriculars. We never got consensus on those issues.
Any other comment from the board on, on how you want to move forward with that? The donation versus, it's under second with everybody?
Yeah, that sounds fun.
All right. One other item of new business, I bring this up in terms of emailing, texting, and IMing. One of the other things that came up during the PSBA meeting, that was in January, was a cautionary word from, uh, PSBA, you know, regarding board members emailing or texting or IMing during board meetings to various folks and or just outside of, of board meetings. So, I asked Mr. Schubert to bring forth sort of what can you and can't you do in terms of the sunshine law regarding email and, uh, Mr. Schubert?
Sure. The sunshine law's silent on the specific issue regarding the use of technology at board meetings. But the intent of the sunshine law is that all the date regarding board business be done in the public. So, you know, any communications that would not be public dealing with board business would be granted. So, if you're gonna be, you can't shoot an email to somebody across the table or a text message to somebody across the table, that an item is being debated. Because that's denying the intent of the sunshine law and preventing the public from hearing that debate and you're entitled to hear that debate. So, that's, that would be the prohibition. Beyond that, there's no specific prohibition. I mean, I guess it's just, you know, a, an issue of whether or not it's-
So, I'm, so in other words, the chairman of committee wants to remind everybody that this committee meeting tomorrow, and they send an email, if you think of, he or she thinks about it now, that's appropriate.
That would be technically appropriate.
But you can't say, or he or she, I'm sorry, cannot say, "I'm gonna vote no on a particular thing."
Or, or any real comment on that board business.
But there's no way to tell if-
What you're doing-
Chairman of a particular committee is saying, "Okay, oh, I'm sitting here, I see my four, four members, three of the board members, I'm saying no to mine." You're allowed to do that.
That would not be prohibited, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just making clarify so that, so he is emailing, if that's not necessarily means of delivery.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, okay, I'm just making that point. That's all I'm asking for.
I was just asking what was prohibited. And I'm, my opinion is what's prohibited is sending emails about what's being debated with the business of, you know, with-
This wasn't an accusation.
I didn't say why.
This is, there's too many minutes and the texting stuff and emails came up during TASDA. It was a suggestion that they made to all the board's residents that were there. I'm bringing it to the table in regard to boards and that everybody understands what this is.
I didn't say it was an accusation.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm saying that better for the public. And so, we just want to make sure that everybody understands what we're supposed to be doing and that's what's-
Just to clarify, I know sometimes people see us on our computers up here. We are paperless and a lot of our recording documents are on, on the computer. So, if you see us doing, it's not like we're up here playing on a computer, but we're pulling up resolutions, all the curtailment resolutions were sent via email, all that. We don't have stacks of papers here anymore. So, that's why we're on the computers. Just to clarify.
Okay. Any other comment from board members on this issue? Okay, seeing none. Presentations by the public on issues.
I have one other. I just want to mention, since the last meeting, there was an article in the News of Southern Berks, really about our last meeting, and it was a quote from one of the participants in, that I received several comments from constituents as well as several employees. I just want to make sure that it's very clear. And this article, Don Basil was making comments about seeking to go down a path of bankrupting the district and so forth. Several people have contacted me expressing concerns that this is the approach the board is taking, so, and so on. And I think it's important for us to publicly state that this is not what our intent is as a board, that we intend for this school to be around forever and so forth. And that's not the path that we're, we're taking. And to clarify, that was not a board member that made that, that comment that was in the paper. This was an article in the News of Southern Berks.
Right. My name is not Don Basil. Okay.
We've no intention of going bankrupt here in this district, so make sure the public is well aware of it.
Okay, any other comments? All right. Presentation by public on issues.
I'm referring back to that Ridge Drive Douglasville. I'm pretty tired tonight, so I won't be my firebrand self. Sorry. Um, tonight I'm issuing the board a challenge. Take on teachers' union. Almost 70% of this district's budget is sucked up by salaries. It's irresponsible to raise our taxes while teachers collect 4% pay raises each year. Private sector workers aren't getting 4% pay raises in this economy. If the teachers' union accepts a 4% pay raise for two years, the district will save over $2 million. Ladies and gentlemen, that's enough to save full day under burden. This board needs to show true leadership. The union doesn't run the, doesn't run the district, you run the district. I suggest you give the teachers' union ultimatum. Either accept the pay freeze or the board will fire the teachers and get to make up the difference. Well, the other way to make up the difference is all, thank you. This will make you proud of the work of teachers, but overburdened taxpayers will thank you. How, how district operating now is unsustainable. You simply can't keep overtaxing taxpayers. We have gotten, what have we gotten? A school that didn't even make actively progress last year. I'm incredibly disappointed in any of the nine board members refusing to accept the necessity of budget hikes. Is Mr. Basil the only board member with common sense? It would appear so. I have a non-taxpayer funded alternative to libraries, the internet. This isn't the 1970s anymore. There are, there are alternatives. I also have a non-taxpayer funded alternative to the fourth and fifth grade band, crack at lessons. $7.3 million isn't a few dollars, as was said by one board member earlier. For the price that taxpayers pay, we deserve better. Please do the work you're elected to do and balance this budget responsibly. Don't vote against everything. We, we know you don't want to cut it, but you have to cut it. You have to cut things. And finally, in regard to this co-curricular fiasco, it's not fair that some kids can do their activity for free while, while other athletes do their sports and have to pay for it. Marching band is not the same as math class and there's no need for it to be co-curricular. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Eric Tomlin, Douglasville. First of all, I apologize for a couple of outbursts this evening, but I get frustrated out because I understand about the, uh, resurfaces and everything like that that I had. Uh, but the reason why I had, you know, I like to keep saying, I've been coming here since 1970, used to avoid meetings. Mr. Basil, I remember you're among us on this board. I remember a lot, a lot of the people on this board. And I tried to get to you is by the avenue, the fact that these board meetings were recorded one time. There was back reading, or reading around the Read Care Committee, Read Care Board Committee. There was two out there, battle it out, like Hattfield and the Court. One was video taken into the left, the other was recorded to the right. But actually, the school board itself was recording the beat in the back room. They had hooked up the sound system in the Menoxi pit, the Menoxi building. It was about 15, 20 years ago. Mrs. Vileman, I don't know that you were there at the time, I think it was, you very remember that? By the way, I'd be very sorry to see you leave if you weren't, uh, guitar. Congratulations. Uh, but they were recording it because there was so much, pointing fingers what was said, what wasn't said. But I, I don't know whether this tape player, whether they were documented or what other, so just wanted to get that out. And by the way, to talk about this gate thing, why don't we have a catchgate on this stadium? You want, you pay the plane, you want to pay the wall, too. You want to use that stadium, pay for that stadium.
Good, thank you. Jim Ferrans, 106 Victoria Drive, Douglasville. I heard earlier that negotiations would be underway regarding transportation costs. The question that I had is that if a lower cost is negotiated for transportation, will that have any effect on the dollar amount that the Benning Public School Initiative is collecting? In other words, will there be a lesser amount that would need to be collected to account for the transportation?
No, because transportation is not part of that amount.
Uh, I heard earlier tonight, I misunderstood, that of the $425,000, $50,000 included in that.
No, I was incorrect at that time. I was corrected by this, this sponsor.
So, there, so out of that dollar amount, there's nothing in that for transportation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jim, Douglasville, 555 Drive. I wanted to say something about something that was talked in the past and something that is how we're still gonna be discussing teachers. With that, the thing I'm very skeptical space with is inevitable that some programs will be cut. It is at this time, I ask you to renew the basic skills map and establish a possibility. I'm not here to make suggestions about what should be cut and set, but I am asking you to continue to look elsewhere for the money. While all courses are less, there are some that are needed. Basic skill chart is one of those that are needed. At the very least, every child needs to read right through the map for the rest of their life. How can cutting the map program even be an option? The suggestion to eliminate this program for less than six hours is unacceptable. Children in the class are there for a reason. They all struggle with math. This class is the best placement for them. Their teacher works with them in small groups. They use math manipulatives like pretend blocks, back counting fraction bars. They use math manipulatives like pretend blocks, arithmetic, and fraction bars. These teachers are getting through these kids in different non-traditional methods. Kinetics, salary, learning movement is one of the value strategies that these teachers use to help these students. These teachers are constantly reviewing the basics like adding, subtracting, and regrouping. They are spending time teaching students who are unable to memorize the skill of such math. This class allows otherwise struggling students to gain confidence and learn skills to be a successful math student. These kids struggle enough in school, what good will come to them by pushing them in a larger class with no support? Who is going to help those kids who don't read or write well? What good will computer programs like OX do these children? These children already have access to this program and it has fixed the problem. Yes, Odyssey can supplement any math program, but it can't be used as a replacement. Children who struggle with reading and writing are supported by learning support. Children who struggle with math are certainly supported with a basic skills program. Why is cutting this class even an option? Are we forgetting that not every child learns the same pace or way? What has happened to making sure that no child is left behind? Are we still trying to make the grades on PSAs? Or are we only concerned with balancing budgets these days? Have you looked at the test scores to see how this class is helping students? It's the school's goal to have children be proficient. If so, then you can't align them by taking away this program. My daughter graduated out of the basic skills program at AIC in fourth grade, so I have witnessed the growth of the program. My son is in basic skills math at MEC this year and accept the same opportunity for him next year. While activity fees will be implemented next year in sports programs at Daniel Boone and my tax dollars that I rely on to give my son the best education he deserves, I believe strongly in this math program. Please allow these children to have the best math suitable for their needs. I encourage you again to visit the basic skills classroom, see all the hands raised, watch these learners do their best. Shouldn't every child have the best environment to learn the basics for math? Concepts taught in this class are skills needed for a lifetime. I encourage you to look for other classes in the curriculum that could be cut and said. How can basic skills math not be a requirement when we're looking at the big picture in life? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Gwona, 2835, Long Island, Pittsburgh. And I talked about the same initiative that she was just talking about. I'm taking this opportunity to share the importance of basic math skills class. My son, rather, fourth grader at MEC. It would be to his detriment if the class was not available for a significant change and would dramatically affect his academic career and his future as a whole. I found research that showed the importance of a solid foundation for basic math skills. On the Brooklyn's website, it states that, quote, "Students must learn arithmetic so they can move on to do more demanding mathematics, algebra, geometry, and calculus," end quote. On another website, there's a blog titled, quote, "The Importance of Basic Mathematics." In this article, it states, "Mathematics plays a vital role in the modernization of this civilization. It is everywhere and affects everyday lives of people. Mathematics is one of the essential and basic areas of the college curriculum, which is a core subject matter. How a community defines mathematics affects what and how mathematics gets taught in local schools. It's therefore important to note that the referred best methods suited to promote the acquisition of mathematical skills are the methods that are simplified and don't give much doubt in the young mind of the students. Teachers also must be resourceful and creative enough to present concepts in a very organized and comprehensible way. I believe that specifically, the basic math teacher at MEC is very resourceful and creative, such as stating here, and therefore, my child was excelling in math ever since he began in the basic skills class last year. Now, the valuable point to consider is mentioned in this blog statement. Quote, "Today, a good education in mathematics is important because of usefulness in careers such as environmental studies, business, engineering, medicine, psychology, and biology, as well as biological, mathematical, and physical science. Knowledge of mathematics also helps students understand generators and computers. This last statement stresses that in order to understand how to operate and perform mathematical operations and the technologies mentioned, a person must acquire first a basic knowledge. Plus, I'd like to share the importance that I found on this classic website. Quote, "The implication for mathematics is that some of these processes, particularly basic facts, need to be developed to the point where they are done automatically. If this fooling trickery does not develop, then the development of higher-order mathematics skills such as multiple addition and subtraction, long division, fractions, may be severely impaired. If a student constantly has to compute the answers to basic facts, less of that student's thinking capacity can be devoted to higher-level concepts than a student who can effortlessly recall the answers to basic facts. All of this I share to express the importance of math. My son needs additional help in learning these basic skills that will be a foundation for his future. Learning support is immensely important to success in math. My son needs this support. Therefore, I ask you to consider the importance of the lives of many children in our school district before making any decisions to change the class. Thank you."
Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, my name is Dana Meyer from Nicholson Avenue, Douglasville. I have a question for the board. Is there a way to obtain a written itemized list of the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we're trying to raise in the Daniel Boone Public School Initiative?
We discussed it a number of times, it's all salaries.
It's salaries.
It's just straight up salaries?
Salaries.
And then?
Salaries and benefits for seven teachers.
Seven teachers, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My name is Alenda Perez, 106 Victoria Drive, Douglasville. With all due respect, Dr. Otto, when we had a phone call together in our conversation, you had said that the fifty thousand dollars for transportation was included in the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So therefore, if you do make negotiations with your transportation contracts, I would appreciate letting us know.
I'm looking at the number right now and the number that we got, it's not in there.
Okay, well, Dr. Otto was at otherwise, okay. And if we could have that itemized list, we'd greatly appreciate it. Because we are trying to raise money and...
There's no list, it's seven teachers' salaries and benefits.
Period.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Chat, 729 Second Street, Detroit. Mr. Shanin and the rest of the board, thank you for getting that resolution started.
I have a comment about committee of the whole meetings. I know you said no decisions in the past have been made. However, I've been at meetings where it was, can we get a consensus on this and so forth? So I would hope in the future that would be recorded. There was consensus on a certain topic. And even at committee meetings, I correct you, you came to a decision to give the whole board a recommendation or something, correct?
But according to Mr. Subers, it's not an official action.
I'm asking you, I'm saying I would hope the minutes would also indicate that if you made a major recommendation to the committee of the whole, that your committee agents would reflect that, that's all I'm saying. That's over and above Mr. Subers's request. I'm just saying I think I would be, I'm just saying I think I would be in there. The ultimate responsibility for student success rests with students. They are the ones putting in the time, doing homework, asking questions in class, scoring well on tests. But the librarians, babysitters, nurses, elementary, middle school, and high school staff, the special ed teachers, the on-court teachers, the assistant principals and the principals in the central office, and the clerical staff, and the maintenance staff, and support staff are the ones molding those students and instructing. I was a teacher, but I always considered myself to be an instructor. Because I don't really teach, I instruct. And I really took offense to the gentleman's comment tonight about teachers and what they do for this district and the good job they are doing in this district. The ultimate responsibility is with the students, and they're the ones producing. But we have goods, bad, as I listed in this district, and I would want to see them leave. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Smith, 735 Frontwood Drive. Earlier this evening, I provided all of you some data and I asked for some confirmation on that. I was pleased that Mr. Ross so kind to acknowledge some of that data in that PAC. And also, it's a study that I referenced as well regarding the reverse economic impact of cutting music education programs, particularly at the elementary levels. Repeatedly, and I certainly can empathize with you, as any family who goes through a financial crisis, we certainly bleed altogether as a family, so to speak. We make cuts across the board. I don't decide that my five-year-old and my two-year-old child will no longer receive Christmas presents, birthday presents, or any other extra thing while their parents, myself and my wife, will go on to get these most expensive cell phone plans and things like that. And the reason I bring that up that way is I really hope that the documents I provided you and the data I provided you is really taken heart and a lid, not just set aside as some other member of the community just decides to show up and throw in some data and some extra paper to leave. I really hope that that can be reviewed. I realize we're going PDE to get a consensus from them with regards to the band program. But the one thing I really find kind of interesting is, and I really need to ask the question, can that data be confirmed for us? We hear different numbers being thrown around. We hear different statistics being thrown around as far as the number of students that are going to be impacted, the percentages, the cost. And I asked for that confirmation earlier, and I realized you just got the data. Is there any way that that data can be confirmed for the next board meeting?
Without looking at the data, I couldn't even tell, I couldn't even answer.
So in other words, we voted to set up the PDE to provide a tool, as you stated, without understanding the data nor the long-term effects of...
What you asked me is, can we provide you an answer to the request that you just handed to me tonight? Without having read it, I can't quantify the data that you've asked me. It could take weeks, I don't know.
Fair enough. Can we get confirmation on that, Paul?
Mr. Basil, if PDE comes back and says that we can curtail the grade bands Mr. Ross has requested, we'll take this up in the curriculum committee. And as part of that curriculum instruction committee, I will ask Dr. Otto to confirm those numbers.
That would be excellent.
Okay, but we may be a month, we may be a few months out, okay? That is going to be part of the process that the curriculum committee would take, is what is the impact in the whole my yards that confirms on the data you got? And at that point there, we'll take that up once it's determined what the PDE recommendations are. Just like we did with kindergarten.
Yes, thank you. The other question I had is one of the things I was mentioning was as far as alternatives that were pursued for music education in the district, where it was mentioned by Dr. Otto that the music faculty was asked as far as for those alternatives. As far as I know, my wife being a music educator and also my being involved with that, is that none of the music faculty was contacted nor some of the principals at the elementary level. So we gained a lot of conflicting information from all of you. Thank you.
Shane, 830, Victoria. I sent an email to the school board about the sports program, about allowing kids that are failing two subjects to go to the sports. Did the secretary take that notice?
Yes.
Are you guys willing to change our policy? Because the argument for the sports program anyway, that this is a way to help kids get into college. And if you're failing two subjects, your chances of going into college are going to be very low. So why are we allowing our students, we're setting them up to fail two subjects? They're allowed to fail two subjects and still be able to participate in the sports?
We haven't taken up that policy issue yet. We just received an email last week. So I would say that that would be something to discuss at a committee of the whole meeting. We have to go into the Jennifer Committee of the Whole Meeting, this is obviously a good meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.